Okay, call this meeting to order at 6:33 PM. Will we begin with public input if there's anybody that would like to make a public comment? Hearing none, we move on to student report and we have Sophia, I'll say it was Saldana?
Yes.
Saldana here today, so.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
For academic matters, we do have midterms starting next week, so that starts on Tuesday. And then for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, those are half days. And quarter two will end on the 24th of this month. For fine arts, last Tuesday, the auditions for the maskers one act was held. And callbacks are being held tomorrow after school. Notorious is also traveling to Memphis and they leave on Thursday and get back on Monday. For athletics, the dance club has started performing at halftime performances during boys' and girls' basketball games and their first one was last Friday. And then they'll perform again this week during boys' halftime. Girls' basketball team right now is undefeated. Winter sports have all began, so that's basketball, indoor track, hockey, girls' gymnastics, and cheerleading. And for just other, we had the principal search this Thursday and last Thursday. Two interview candidates have been interviewed so far and two more will be interviewed this Thursday, including our vice principal, Ms. Alonso. Students were given the opportunity to ask questions to the candidates. And it was a really good way for student leaders to get involved with their school community. And then I do have a student work report to show you. I submitted this last week for AP Bio. And it was to demonstrate how different drugs and medications can affect signal communications. Let me just fix it in the brain. So it's right here. So we did a poster and everybody got to choose their own drug or medication. We chose Xanax, but there are students that did like caffeine or even like different normal over the counter vitamins that regular people would just take.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, questions, comments?
What was it that had callbacks?
The one act.
For the maskers one act.
Do you know what they're doing for the one act?
No, not yet.
The only question that I like to ask when it's your first meeting, so I'm just curious sort of like, tell us about you a little bit, like what are you involved in? What do you do here? Like what are your interests? Love to hear kind of a little bit about you, kind of what brings you to the student rep role.
Yeah, my name is Sophia. In the school, I would say I'm really involved in student council. I'm a student council officer. I'm also a part of SLAM. And I'm actually a part of mock trial and we're having our first competition tomorrow. So that's exciting. And I would say I'm just overall really interested in like the different opportunities our school has for student leaders.
What's the subject of the mock trial?
It's on like negligence and alcohol consumption at parties.
Gotcha.
Excellent. Are you gonna be, I think it's tonight we're talking about the student council trip? Are you gonna be on the trip?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much for coming and you're welcome to stay as long as you want, but you can also leave as soon as your report is over.
Thank you.
Okay.
And the coverage to your laptop is awesome.
Yeah, no, you can tell us.
We all noticed it.
Okay, moving on, we have the high school presentation tonight. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Lopret.
Appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this evening and talk about what's happening at the high school. All right, yeah, so I thought the iceberg was kind of a good symbol for tonight's presentation. Kind of we know, you have our eight classes. We, you know, know what's happening with maskers and things like that, but what's happening underneath and how can we get a better sense of the student experience beyond what you're seeing, let's say, you know, on the surface? So tonight's program, we have four presenters. We have Ms. Joel LeBair's class, so members from her human anatomy and physiology class, and they're gonna talk about a recent project that they did. We have some faculty members from our mental health counseling area and Ms. Rogers and Ms. Barbudo, and they're gonna follow up on some work that we did last year. We have some students from our NEASC self-reflection process that are gonna update you on how that work is going. And then I see Mrs. Yamas over there, talk about some students that have gone on the immersion travel trips and how that's been going, so. Without any further ado, Ms. Joel LeBair.
All right, you guys are. So I just wanted to first start by saying what a privilege it is to be here tonight because I think to speak to the iceberg, these, the high school kids are really amazing. They really, I feel privileged to work at this high school. And I feel really proud of these students, I apologize, students this year. So I teach a couple of courses, but for anatomy and physiology, we have both honors and we have an academic, more college prep level. And I would say that the curriculum is quite rigorous. And I'm pretty familiar with anatomy and physiology, what, how it's taught in other high schools like Reading. My best friend teaches over there, Stonemans Science Department. And I know not all high schools teach all body systems like I do. So I really push these guys very hard and they learn a lot of material. And I think that speaks to that. I'm gonna go earlier. I thought you were gonna guide me through this.
I certainly can.
No, that's okay. So I think the idea that I had before, behind this project was the following. So it was actually a project we did in October and it was towards the beginning of the year. So we start off with anatomy terminology and learning about homeostasis. And they're really, we're just starting to get to know each other, right? And build a relationship. And so this year, I really wanted to right off the bat, put them to the test and have them do a project that brought high expectations, a real growth mindset that if it didn't work well, they could keep trying and re-engineering and working together as a team, apply what they were learning. So before we go in-depth into all the body systems, we actually learn, we go through all the, you know, the body systems in a general sense, right, guys, and the organs and stuff. And so this was a way to explore that without having gone deeper yet. And so in short, basically, these guys had, they had an individual responsibility of research. And then they also had to get into smaller teams and the larger teams. And they did this, the building part was in a day. I don't know if one of you guys was gonna say that, but it was in a day, which I think also, this is not something that I spent weeks on. This was like, what was it, two or three class periods, guys? Oh, three maps, right?
It was like two and a half.
Two and a half, right. So they pulled this together pretty, pretty fast. So I'm gonna let them, you can go to the next slide, they can speak a little more about it. Yeah, go ahead, who wants to start?
Hi, so I'm Juliana. And me and my classmates worked to build a detailed model of the human body system using recycling materials like this. This hands-on approach helped us enhance essential teamwork, communication, and problem-solving skills. And collaborating on such a large-scale project taught us how to divide responsibility, be critical, and support each other while achieving a common goal.
Hi, my name is Katie. And this project allows us to explore body systems in-depth, understanding not just the anatomy, but also how organs work together to maintain homeostasis. By constructing models and researching each organ's role, we gained a clear picture of how the body functions as a whole. It gave us a new appreciation for the complexity of our own bottles, bodies. And in this model, we explored the muscular and the skeletal system.
Hi, my name is Shania. And an important part of the project was learning and using proper anatomical directional and medical terminology. Just helped us communicate effectively and apply what we learned in class to real world.
My name is Janice. My name is Sophia. And building off of Shania's point, using the right terms can make us feel more confident and prepared for situations like this where we have to explain what we are.
Hi, I'm Ella. And this project helped us grow in many ways. It was competitive and interactive, which kept us motivated to keep working and excited to learn. And we also developed many valuable skills such as time management, creativity, and public speaking. Most importantly, building and presenting our models gave us the confidence to tackle complex topics and showcase our learning in meaningful ways.
Yeah, so these guys, the winning group, we put them on display for the school. We tried to engage other students to vote. And the winning projects, their class got a free breakfast, a bagel breakfast. Trying to think what else.
That was the, that's the QR code.
That, no, the QR code was voting and it also, that's actually another thing, they made videos, video, sorry, audio presentations to go with each of the models. And that was more of an honors expectation than for my academic class, but they had higher, you guys had to use those anatomical terminology to really explain what was being seen in their model. So, yeah, thank you for, they're doing great. Oh, I wanted to say both their class, they don't know it yet, but their class and my Janice class, I'm hoping they are gonna have some presentations and projects for STEM night in March, so hopefully you guys will attend that. And yeah, guys, don't know yet, but you're gonna be doing some stuff. All right, thank you so much, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any questions for them?
What system was Betty?
Oh, that was my project, my group. It's just like an inside joke that our, like, group had, so we just like named it.
What body system is that?
Oh, what body system? It's the respiratory, the circulatory, and that's it.
All right, okay. Very, very Taylor Swift.
So these, those models were on the bridge.
Yep.
And they were all kind of posted there.
Those are so cool.
They're up there for a while, so you can.
Very cool.
Learn more about it at the audio, you know, to go with the presentation.
And what ages take this, what grades take this class?
Primary, juniors and seniors.
Juniors and seniors?
Yeah, juniors and seniors.
Such a fun way to learn instead of just reading about it in a textbook. That's amazing, I love it.
They did a great job, yeah.
Thank you.
Good play.
My sixth grade daughter saw those, totally motivated her.
Yeah.
That was the idea.
All right, so we, you may recall last year, we had our school adjustment counselor speaking about the screeners that we've been implementing in at the high school. So this is the second year of this and it's a good opportunity to report on it and see what progress we're making there, so. Ms. Rogers and Ms. Barbudo.
All right, hi, everybody. Thank you for having us today. I'm Jackie Rogers. I'm a school adjustment counselor and the bridge clinical coordinator here at the high school.
And I'm Gabriella Barbudo and I am the other school adjustment counselor here at the high school.
And just before we pivot into this, I really appreciated all the work that went into that project, so way to go, folks. That was a really, kind of a really neat thing to see this fall. So thank you, Mr. LeBair as well. So we are here, as Mr. Lopret shared, to talk about the latest progress on our use of screening tools here at the high school. So it came out of a health class presentation on anxiety and symptoms of depression a few years ago. We started using screeners last year and we're using them again this year. So we're gonna go through a bit of the what, the why, and the how behind them. And then we're gonna talk about results and next steps. So what are screening tools? Evidence-based universal mental health questionnaires. So for any students who are out there who have taken them when they were in ninth or 10th grade, they're short. So the PHQ9 is a screener for symptoms of depression and low mood. And it's nine questions. We administer it now to our ninth grade students. And our other screener is the GAD, which measures symptoms of generalized anxiety. And that is administered to our 10th graders through their health classes. And what's our purpose? So really, our goal is always to move towards a more preventative and proactive support system around mental health because we know that with early intervention and more robust tier one and tier two programming, we can reduce rates of crisis and higher levels of need at the tier three level, which involves higher levels of care outside of school and in school. And then how are we implementing them? So we are very fortunate to get to collaborate with our health teachers and also an organization called the NAN Project, which is specifically geared towards education around depression and warning signs around self-harm and suicidal thoughts and actions. And we go into the ninth grade health class with the first half of our ninth graders in fall, and then with the remaining ninth graders in spring with the NAN Project, present and provide the screening. And then in the 10th grade classes, Gabby and I go in and lead a presentation of our own and provide the GAD seven screener. Something that we always share with parents as, you know, communicating right up front is that this is not for the purpose of diagnosis. I understand that for folks who aren't necessarily working in the mental health field every day can raise some concerns and questions, which I completely understand. So the purpose of this is not to diagnose. It does not become a part of a student's record in any way, shape, or form. And parents and caregivers always have the right to opt their child out of the screener. I did note that that's very infrequent, which I think says a lot for this community and our openness to talking about mental health. And again, we know that getting more of a sense of how we're doing with our own mental health can be really impactful in increasing our wellness. So it's great to see that level of openness here. So what do the action steps look like? So following the presentations, we administer a very brief Google Form version of the screener that students take. And we always let students know upfront that their caregivers have signed off on this if they receive the screener in their email. And that we'll be talking with parents of their concerns around safety and also sharing the results. So students are made aware, we remind them at the beginning of class. With our PHQ9 screener around symptoms of depression, there is a question specifically related to safety that if students answer, it's kind of a Likert scale, zero to four. If there's any answer above a zero, that requires a same-day safety conversation. So that looks like myself, Ms. Barbudo, or another counseling staff member going through some questions with them and determining whether a higher level of care is needed that day. Beyond that, we meet with all students who fall into the moderate to severe range. We speak with all their caregivers. And then we talk about resources. So really, the first level of intervention is having the conversation with the student. They get some insight into their mental health and how their symptoms might be impacting functioning. We speak with their caregivers, we review all of our services here at school, and we also review services that are available outside of school. And I think those are some of my favorite conversations, honestly, because it's so great to meet students I haven't connected with and maybe some that I have, and talk about what's available to them to help them feel their best. And another neat addition is that along with our one-on-one follow-up meetings with these students, we've been able to offer a tier-two coping skill group to all ninth grade students and 10th grade students, including those who may have been opted out of the screener but were present for the presentation. So that's something that all ninth and 10th graders can choose to participate in this year. Okay, I think we can go to the next slide.
So these are just two examples of the PHQ9 and the GAD seven. As you can see, they're fairly short and they're on a Likert scale, which helps us determine what level a student may fall into. And the most important thing to note on the PHQ9 is the last question, which does talk about thoughts around self-harm. So these are our ninth grade results. There were 71 students who were a part of the presentation. And the important things to note are the students that were in moderate, there was 12. Moderate to severe was six, and there was zero in the severe range. And another big note is the last red column, which is total students reporting yes to question nine, which were thoughts around self-harm. There were 10 students of the 71 that we identified. And another thing to note, there were 10 same-day safety evals that occurred while we were doing these presentations and screeners. And eight were previously not known to the counseling team. And two resulted in same-day Elliot evals, so they were seen outside of school.
The reason we put that in the notes is just to name that we can, you know, work with students even from the time that they're in elementary school. And each year that we've provided these screeners, we've always come across a student who might have been suffering silently and didn't have the language to share with someone at home. And we know that you can be really, really close with your family and still not have the language to share it or to think that it's typical for everyone because it's been your lived experience. So again, it's a great opportunity to catch students who may be struggling and need more support. Elliot, for those not familiar, is an excellent organization. It's a local agency that provides 24/7 mental health care. And we partner with them. And so when a student is perhaps at risk of being endangered to themselves, we refer to Elliot and they meet with the students either at their home or at school or at their location, which is in Lynn. And so this is just another slide that contains our results from this fall with our 10th graders. So just kind of jumping right to the bottom, we have 21.8% of students reporting moderate to severe symptoms, excluding the opt-outs. So these are folks who are at a higher level of their symptoms of anxiety impacting day-to-day functioning. And then of the 24 students who are identified of falling within the moderate to severe symptom range, 14 of these students were not previously identified and connected with mental health support here at school. And several of, you know, those students are now folks who are working with us in the counseling department. And again, like all ninth and 10th graders that we've met with so far have access to our coping skills group, which we will also offer again in spring.
On the last slide, you have another orange category?
Yes.
The Elliot, was there a zero on this one or you just didn't ask the same question?
Such a great question. So the PHQ9, which was referenced on the previous slide, is the only one that has the safety-related question. Yep, really good question. Okay, and then this kind of gets to, again, why we believe, you know, passionately in doing this work and connecting with, you know, a graphic, an infographic from DESI and another infographic of the two pyramids on the other side from MassMAMCA, which is a Massachusetts school mental health consortium. So why, you know, one of the reasons that we're doing this again is because having tier one supports that are robust involves universal services and preventative practices that can reduce that higher level of need. Where we might be looking at services including bridge support, which is a program we have here, and sometimes IP services. So again, that tier three is really intensive, individualized support that is super important and valuable and needed and deserved by a number of students. However, we often find ourselves in more of a reactive place here in terms of, and in all schools, in terms of mental health and supporting safety first. And the more that we can move towards tier one and tier two is always really a goal. So the graphic kind of over on this side that shows what we envision versus the reality just speaks to the nature of the work that we do in mental health, particularly at the high school level, where we sometimes end up in a more reactive place and we want to work back towards that preventative place. Having screeners like this can really help move the needle in that direction and to prevent a top-heavy pyramid. Also, I know that, I'm kind of moving beyond this, but I know NEASC is coming up tonight as well. It's really interesting to look at the NEASC criteria and that it's really additional and more robust services in the tier one and tier two range that can help us meet some of our goals in terms of implementing this work at like a living it phase. And the really good news about North Reading High School is that being able to have these screeners in places we currently do is allowing us to be in that living it phase. So yeah, that's pretty much us in a nutshell and what screeners are doing here at the high school.
Any questions?
Uh, I do, actually. First off, outstanding.
Thank you.
No, being proactive on this sort of thing, there's no substitute for it, so in the level of detail that you're going through, outstanding.
Thank you.
My question is, do, what have you seen, if any, for multi-year trends? Up, down?
Yeah, that's a really great question. So last year, we had lower levels in terms of at least our fall screening, so not speaking to the spring results, but we were around 24% for students experiencing higher levels of depression in the moderate to severe range. And now we're at 27.7. So it's hard to draw any conclusions about that data, but it's just, it's an interesting thing to know. Yeah.
Two data points doesn't necessarily, can be coincidental more than a trend, but I appreciate tracking it, so thank you.
For sure, for sure. And then I do want to, in terms of the anxiety one, last year it was about 25%, so about a quarter of students. And this year, from the fall results, it was 21.8%, so a little bit lower. So they kind of swapped.
Within the margin of error, though, they're pretty close.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, thank you.
Has it just been the two years? Okay.
Yes.
Because the self-harm number seemed really, I guess I was surprised by that.
Yeah, so interesting, interestingly, I would say, yeah, 15% seems pretty high.
Yeah.
At the same time, we've conducted almost 40 safety evals this year already. And that's a pretty high number for the first, you know, five months of the school year. That has been my experience in my, in my three years here and in three years in a previous district. We've been seeing the numbers go up since the pandemic with not necessarily signs of slowing down, which I think is another reason that, or really, I know is another reason why I take every opportunity to talk about the tier one and tier two support. Yeah, no, thank you. Yeah. For the work you're doing. No, of course, thank you. Yeah.
I have a question, just, so it looks like through the screening tool, you're identifying additional kids that weren't on your radar.
Yeah.
Right, both screening tools. And you have, of course, the high-risk kids that are seen by Elliot and, you know, safety screen.
Yeah.
What about those, you know, I remember the number for anxiety was 14 kids. Do you con, do you continue to follow them? And are you ever involved in a referral or into, to an external, like, therapeutic setting or?
Yeah, great questions. So I hear Gabby chiming in. Do you want to answer that one, Gabby?
Oftentimes with students who are in that moderate to severe range, we would reach out to the parent and meet with the student. And so we would follow up with the parent with outpatient, outpatient therapy support, so various websites that they could find additional supports if needed. Some of the students were already connected to outside counseling, which was awesome, and their parents were aware. And then we tend to follow up with the students, especially if they request additional meetings, which some have.
All right, so referring to a website that might have clinicians listed on it or something like that?
Yep, and parents can input any criteria that they might have. So insurance companies, if they're willing to pay out of pocket, if their student would maybe prefer a certain gender or religion or race. It kind of has those options broken down. And then we often offer additional support if the parent would like it to maybe support their student to decrease their options.
Yeah, our main, the main resource that we use right now is TherapyMatcher, which we have found to be the best because it's managed by licensed clinical social workers. So Psychology Today and certain other sites are valuable, but you also, you often don't know if they're opening. So we have found that that's been the best way to connect. We also always encourage the parents or caregivers to reach out to their pediatrician, who might have folks in network already available to them. So TherapyMatcher and the pediatricians have been most helpful. And then I think, I really am very grateful for our counseling department because each year that we've done this, we have kind of made capacity to meet with any student who's interested in connecting on an ongoing basis. And we have found a good number of students really take us up on that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay.
You're not a Tok'ya.
Oh, yeah, please, keep them coming. This is good.
Do you have any notion as to what is driving the parental opt-outs? Like, is there a common theme or?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So we don't always get that information because we don't require parents and caregivers to disclose what they might not feel comfortable with. Personally, I've had a few students' parents who've shared with me whose kids I might already work with, that they know that they're already on my radar and they're already accessing outside support. So sometimes it's almost like the fatigue of having to do screeners repeatedly if students are already involved. I do think that there is also, for some, fear about it being part of the student record. And we're really, really mindful about keeping confidentiality. It's a little bit different in schools than in outside agencies. But I can, I can understand, like, out of being protective, having concerns about it.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Fascinating, not fascinating is probably the wrong adjective.
Yeah.
Over 50% of the students are mild, reporting mild depression or worse, right?
Yes.
Which is probably not, if you told that to an average person, it's probably not what you would expect.
Yes, and it's wild because while it's like on par with national trends, I think that we don't, we don't always give credence to the fact that our young people right in front of us are managing so much and you folks are coming in with that every day, as adults are, right, into the workplace and into classes and then expected to learn. So that's why we try to make it as visible as possible. So, yeah, and we appreciate everyone's support here in making it possible because it's not, it's, you know, it's a really important thing.
So I, one question and then one comment.
Yes.
So on the question, so you mentioned it was twice a year.
Yes.
In just ninth and 10th?
Yes.
Ninth and 10th grade.
Yeah.
And where exactly is it given and when in the school year is it given?
So where, did you say where is it?
Where, like, is it like first period? Is it like in a certain class and people take it at different times during the day?
Yeah.
Is it like first thing in the year or is it right before midterm start? I'm just curious kind of where it sits.
Yeah, so we work with the health teachers and the NAN Project to find a timing that works best with all of their schedules as to kind of cause the least disruption in the health curriculum. And we are fortunate enough to have health teachers that are incredibly on board with the screeners. And so we try to do it as early as we can. This year, we did it in November.
November and December.
In December that we had the two screeners. And in the fall, sorry, spring, we're hoping for it to be March around there.
Yeah, or April. So last year it was November, December, and April, and I think this year we're likely to fall in that range as well.
And they take it in their health period, in their health class. So depending on which period that student has health, that would be when they take it.
Thank you about the trends. It would be nice if it's around the same time, just because I imagine stress levels do vary a little bit throughout.
Yes.
Yeah.
And if you're trying to look at year over year. And I guess my, my only comment would be, and anybody listening to school committee meetings probably in agreement on this already, but like, when we start talking about budgetary issues, I mean, sadly, these are the positions that we're talking about sometimes.
Yeah.
These are positions that are being at risk in other, other districts and they're valuable. The one thing I think we or you or somebody should think about is trying to get like an infographic, like kind of like a one-pager that really shows the value, because I think people think like, oh, what you do or whatever, but they don't know the volume. And knowing that like twenty-five percent of ninth graders are dealing with this. And again, if it's being shared here in a public meeting, then we're not giving student names or anything like that, but-
Yeah.
I think we need to think about it when we're talking about budgets in the future. Um, having some really, you know, clear graphics that show the usage of this, because again, I, I don't know that people appreciate how much, you know, how many students are struggling with things. And so it's, um, just, just a thought that like we should all probably work together to have so that when we're talking about positions like this, it, it, we've talked before about like level one screening, but, but not seeing the numbers, and I think that makes it more dramatic.
Thank you. We actually, we have an amazing intern this year, um, and they created an infographic.
Right.
Um, so which we are thinking about ways to disseminate because it is powerful. It tells the story of the data.
Yep.
And, um, I'll be, I'll, you promise I'll shut up after this, but, um, the, when you talk about budgets, it's always tier one and tier two-
Right.
-work that goes first.
Correct.
It's always tier two because that's semi nonexistent, and then tier one. So we want more of it.
Right.
And I'm gonna step off the stage now.
Thank you very much.
I think before you go, I just, kind of what was said without being explicitly said is that idea, and why we might look at the numbers and say, wow, fifty percent, you know, like-
Yeah.
To be able to con, you know, constantly remind students that asking for help is a strength and not a weakness. And that, that idea, if I ask for help and it appears, wow, boy, isn't that, isn't that a relief? So, um, maybe I'm less inclined to ask next time just because I know it's there, I've seen it, you know, and that might-
Yeah.
-help delay a lot of, a lot of fears and concerns and anxiety. So thank you so much.
Thank you for all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and as Ms. Rogers said, the, you know, that kind of, uh, criteria that is in our NEASC standards and, and is, it does talk to that kind of tiered support for students and student mental health and student well-being. Uh, the next part of our program this evening, I'm gonna have these students in the back here kind of come up. Um, we are actually kind of nearing the end of our self-reflection and that process of looking at the things that we do at the school and how they match up to the standards, what are our strengths, what are areas of focus that we want to be concerned about moving forward. And if you recall that, uh, in our NEASC, uh, reaccreditation cycle, they, they have a new model out now, and we are completing our self-reflection with the idea in the fall of twenty-five, a collaborative conference will take place at the high school with probably six other, uh, visiting educators as part of the, you know, collaborative conference visit. And then two years later, we'll have our reaccreditation visit. So, uh, we're in this process right now. So what I think kind of makes sense maybe is if we each, um, as we are on the, also on the grid here, Butter, uh, who's a senior, who's a student, so we have students that were on the standards committees, and then we have representation from a student that was on the self-reflection team, and maybe just take an opportunity to, uh, you know, kind of speak about what it was like to be a contributing member, which standard you worked on, some of the discussions that were, you know, in those meetings, um, and, and what you saw as the value of that. Okay? How's that? Now get out of your way. So Butter, why don't you lead us off?
Um, hi, my name's Butter Ordio. Um, I'm a senior class officer and I'm also a vice president of Social Activism Club. Um, I worked in the first standard, which is learning culture. And so in the beginning, we worked with several teachers in a room. It was around four students with around like maybe fifteen to twenty teachers and faculty members. And we, there's different principles in each standard. So the principle I worked on with my fellow, uh, students and faculty members was principle one point one, which was, uh, the school committee provides a safe, positive, respectful, and inclusive culture that demonstrates a commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. And throughout our time, we kind of just like looked at the school as an entirety. We looked through the handbook, we looked at clubs, and we really like looked at factors that, uh, bring more to these, like, standards and principles that we're working on. So me, I brought my, like, experience in Social Activism Club, bringing a lot of, like, attention to, like, these certain months to minorities such as like Black History Month or like LGBTQ. And it was really interesting to look through, throughout the school, just for these things, like, all these different clubs that we promote that have all these, like, things you can go to, like robotics club, or ma, even make your, like, own club, which promotes, like, diversity and, like, inclusion.
My name's Natalia Perusos. Um, I'm a junior. I'm the president of our student council. I also s- serve on our school council. Um, I also worked on standard one, so basically just what Butter said, we sat in the room, there's four students, fifteen to twenty teachers. Um, the standard that I worked on, it was basically about just pushing the student to become not just like the vision of the graduate, but just becoming like the best version of yourself. So how do we, like, push students? So we did a lot of work with, like, our, like, class officers, like, allowing students to take up higher leadership opportunities that they wouldn't before. And then we talked about some of our AP courses, um, and just some of the more rigorous opportunities that we have in the school. But I would say that, like, I chose standard one at least, like, along with Butter for my experience in student leadership, and especially like student council and Special Olympics, so we were able to bring those things, like, into the evidence and into the reports. And I feel like having that student insight in there, not just with the teachers, um, you're able to see all corners of the school that you might not see with just the teachers on that standard. So I think it was a very enjoyable process. Um, I'll let-
Um, I'm Sujie. I'm also a student representative to the school committee. Um, I worked on standard two, which was student learning. Um, and I specifically worked on, um, uh, principle two point three, which was all about interdisciplinary learning and project-based learning. Um, and how our, uh, standard kind of organized it was by breaking up the teachers themselves into, um, groups for the principals as kind of like a basic level. And then, um, towards the end of like our work, we kind of more shared ideas across, um, principles and across those elements. Um, so there were three other students, Sophie couldn't be here today, she was one of them, um, as well as another senior. Uh, so we definitely had a lot of experience with, um, both project-based learning and just all sorts of student learning because we've been here for four years. Um, so our kind of greatest contributions came through a lot of the exemplars that we provided. Um, so I myself provided like ten examples, I don't know if they ended up using them all, but, um, this was kind of throughout my history classes and my science classes and my English classes. Um, and I as well as kind of showed my projects that I implemented interdisciplinary learning into, even if it wasn't in the rubric, um, which a lot of the teachers that I was working with kind of took that into account and how they're gonna be changing their rubrics to, um, implement interdisciplinary, interdisciplinary learning a lot more. Um, and ultimately it was just a really interesting and fun experience to work with teachers in, um, a different setting than the classroom. Um, and, you know, there's definitely like a lot of comfort in the way that we got to contribute and there was, um, no judgment and we really got to be authentic in how we, um, gave feedback to, to the different elements. And I, um, think it was really helpful experiences for me and the teachers, so.
Me and Shania worked on standard three. And first, just to get a little bit into what standard three is, it's all about how our school man, maintains, as well as the educators, a school growth plan, an improvement plan, reflection plans, all of that, and overall. But actually, me and Shania worked a little bit more on three point six, which she'll talk about.
So three point six specifically is about educators developing a productive student, family, community, business, and higher education partnerships that support learning. And speaking of our experience, overall, we just really enjoyed having the opportunity to be able to connect and just collaborate with the teachers and faculty. And it was also interesting to be able to learn about some aspects of teaching, like the planning and the thought that goes behind it.
We also got to learn a little bit more about programs, activities, and practices that are held in our school that promote educational and learning needs that we didn't really know about. And so it was really interesting to learn more about all the opportunities the school has to offer.
You?
Hi, I'm Brayden Crosson. I'm a senior here at the high school, co-chair on the school council, uh, with Mr. LaPret. Um, so I'm on the self-reflection committee. So about a couple months back, we met with a NEASC advisor, um, to kind of go over the rubric and the different elements that a school needs to meet in order to be accredited. Um, so our goal tomorrow morning, actually, we're gonna be reviewing all of the reports that the standard committee wrote. We're gonna be reading them, going through them, and then voting on them to, um, either approve or disapprove. Um, and within those reports, there's a few things we're really looking for. So there are those principles that come along with the standards. Then the rubric also has these foundational elements that must be met in order to, like, quote-unquote, pass that standard, to kind of demonstrate that this is what the school has been doing. So we'll be voting on those and then kind of making adjustments as we go, um, adding things, taking away things that need to be in order to get the finalized report to be sent to NEASC later on.
Thank you very much. Okay, questions?
I have, um, a few questions. Um, so first of all, I love students as evaluators sort of here, this is really cool. How were they selected, the students? Um, were they self-selected? Were, like, how, how did they, um, become involved in this process?
For the most part, we were given the opportunity, it was a form that was sent out to the entire student body, and then we could just respond to that form and then we kind of come to an informational meeting and then if you sounded like you really wanted to be a student in that.
Yeah, it was open to everyone.
Okay. Did my, my thought was, um, and it's more of a question, is obviously, um, so self-selected to be part of this committee and give the feedback on the student experience. Um, clearly you guys are like the, um, the kind of cream of the crop, top, you know, you're really involved. You are obviously very, you know, you're in the honors classes, you're in, you're in student government, all of these things. So you're sort of taking advantage of all of there is to take advantage of here. I'm just wondering, in this, uh, in this evaluation process, do you think you're able to gather the full student experience or is it more based on your own sort of, you're, I think you're taking, um, like I say, full advantage of all the opportunities here. What about the kids that aren't doing that, that aren't self-selecting? Do you feel like you could speak to their experiences as well?
Um, I would say we could. Obviously, it's a little tough because some of us haven't been in every single organization that the school offers, but just looking at the school as a whole, like, we were able to dive just into like most of the organizations and the programs that we had, even like talking to some fellow students, asking what other information that we can get to put on these standards. Um, I feel like that we were able to get a lot of information from most of the student body.
Yeah, adding on to that, um, and we also sent out, there was like a NEASC survey that every student took, so we could get input, our input from that, um, even if they weren't on the committees and teams.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good.
Sophia, not to put you on the spot again, since you've been in every, every presentation tonight.
There's a limit.
As I said.
Yeah, but just to piggyback on what Noel was saying, like, obviously you guys are really involved and, and active, and you mentioned that there were even some opportunities you didn't know about, and not to put you on the spot, but do you remember any of those examples?
I think it's more so, especially in ours, I think you learn a lot about like teacher reflection and the reflection that went through that. You wanna remember that list that was, to be honest, sometimes students don't really think about all the teachers that go into the work. So I was thinking about more like the programs that the teachers mentioned that they do here in the DLL, those kind of things for the veteran group as a teacher.
Okay.
And I had no idea that they really do that all day.
Okay, great.
My turn?
Yeah.
Uh, Dr. Daly told me you guys give really candid, honest feedback, so I'm curious, you've done all this reflection, you, you, you met with the, with the faculty, what is school committee not doing now that we could do in the future?
I like that, good question.
It's a good one, right?
Um, I think that, uh, so I've been a representative for a really long time, um, and I think that one of the biggest improvements that we have made, um, this year is we have like a lot of participation from representatives. Last year we went from, I believe, four to this year it's nine, I think. Um, so I think that with gaining student voices in the decisions that are made, um, even if like there might not be an inherent interest, like, like you were saying, um, Sophia and Shania are also representatives and that's like self-selected. Um, but I think just probably getting the word out about what you guys do more to the student body, because I think that there's a lot of people that don't know what you do. In fact, there's a lot that gets school committee and school council confused. Um, so I think that in order to gain more student attention and student contribution, which is ultimately what I, we want, um, is to just like, I don't know, participate more with students.
Great.
That's fair. I knew we'd get a good answer.
So I'll, I'll follow up on that and then one question. Follow up on that would just be also, you know, invite us in for things too. I mean, I've gone in the last couple of years for, you know, the community action projects and they wanted to hear from the school committee, um, around the time of elections, if like school council ever wants to host, you know, an event or things like that, I mean, we'd be happy to come into. And so especially school council, like, I think it's, you know, leadership roles, always happy to do that. Um, I guess my question is, in, in the beginning, Mr. LaPret said that we're gonna be hosting something with like six different schools. So can you speak a little bit about what that's about and like what, what we're hoping to gain from that?
Could you, so collaborative conference?
Yeah, you, you're gonna be a collaborative conference with six different schools.
So, yeah, I'm gonna, I should clarify.
Yes.
So when the, the Oregon Association of Schools and Colleges has a school go through the accreditation process.
Yep.
I, I was on the visiting team for Amesbury. So, you know, a, a, a group of educators will show up and they'll look at Amesbury's self-reflection reports and say, what did you come up with? What, you know, how did you gauge yourself against the standards? And the bottom line is, it, the, the NEASC experience, I think, is intended to be way more collaborative than gotcha.
Right.
I think in the past, it had a little bit of a gotcha element to it. So there's a, there's been a lot of coaching and a lot of training and, and when you have a visiting team, it's basically, you show us what you're doing, show us what you're doing against the standard. And let's say, when you identify a weakness or an area of focus moving forward, is that what is, is everyone in agreement that that's important? Is everyone in agreement that that, that has revealed itself? Or is there something that the, the visiting team recognized that, wow, you didn't, you didn't kind of see this? This is kind of, this looks like something that's kind of important. I don't know how you missed it. Uh, so it's not necessarily six different schools, but it's educators-
Okay.
-that fill six roles, say one per standard.
Yep.
Um, that then, you know, read the reports and, and go through and assess that self-reflection and gauge, again, how it's met against the standards and what are the areas moving forward? And how can, how can the organization help the school?
Excellent, thank you. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. One more. Immersion journey, Spain, twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Thank you. So.
Is there gonna be any?
Immersion journey.
There gonna be any dancing? I'm just wondering. I, I see the dance first, so.
I was hoping food, but.
All right, so we have some students that, you know, um, you may recall, in the past, we've talked about, uh, you know, having opportunities for students to travel. And companies that put packages together and to the degree that the school says, wow, this looks like an experience that might work for us. We've had students travel, uh, to Greece, to Italy, to Eastern Europe. But we were always looking for maybe, is there an organization out there that's offering a slightly different experience? That's more of an immersive language experience. Uh, and Ms. Yamas has been, um, taking some students on those. And this group of here is going to talk about, uh, the immersion journey in Spain. All right.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to quickly again introduce myself and I'm Anna Yamas Flores Quero. And I, uh, take advantage of this and organize these wonderful opportunities for the students. And thanks to you, like you approved that, you probably see me every time here, like asking to approve a trip. But this time, I want my students, and they right away volunteered to come and share some of the highlights of, of the trips. Some of the learnings that they had, some experiences that that's what it's all about. So we want the students to, to take, to immerse, not just in the language, but the culture. And each of them individually, they take so many different like, uh, learnings. So, uh, they're here to share. So, yeah, that's how we go.
Hello, my name is Elena Driscoll. Um, this trip overall, I could probably talk about it forever. But, you know, because it was just incredible. I mean, going from a town, like a smaller town, North Reading, never been to Europe before, this is my first time. So traveling there and immediately as soon as we like landed, landed in Sevilla, I just knew it was a different way of living. It was a different culture that you had to learn how to adjust to. And I think that personally, I can, I'm gonna try to sum it up in like abroad, I can talk whatever. But one of my favorite activities that we did that I think we included some pictures of was going to the school in Madrid and talking to those students there. We talked to students our age and even we got to walk around the school and see the younger children. And like I said, it's just a different way of, it's just learning different, like the way that they learn. Um, I actually got to go and attend one of their English classes and help them with their English, which was very, it was really interesting. We got to practice our speaking with them, they got to practice their speaking with us. And I think that even learning about how they view the American culture and the American lifestyle was interesting to me. I mean, one of my favorite questions that they asked me was, do people really wear pajamas to school? In, in America? And I was like, I try not to, but some people do. And just seeing how they view our culture and how I view theirs, it was very interesting to kind of share our experiences. But this trip also made me realize how much I want to continue learning Spanish. I mean, I took, I, we went sophomore year and I was debating taking, taking Spanish my junior year. And as soon as I got home from that trip, I was like, Mom, you were right. I am going to take Spanish my junior year. Because it was just, it made me want to learn a different, like another language so much more. And I think that learning a different language can be extremely useful in your everyday life, even if you may not realize it, but, yeah.
Hi, I'm Lexi and I went on this Spain trip too. Um, I'd say the best part about this trip was how immersed we were into the culture and how much we got to see, how much we got to do with the little time that we had. Um, we got to pick up the trash on the beach, which definitely gave me some perspective about the world and the unfortunate state that we're living in. But, um, it felt good to be able to be a part of that. A lot of the different ways that we got to immerse ourselves was, um, being left like away from the chaperones and stuff and walking around the city. And, um, getting to practice our Spanish speaking. And, um, it was just a lot of independence that I hadn't really been exposed to before. And it was just a great experience overall.
Oh, hi, I'm Zoe. Um, I think what struck me the most about going to a different country was just how beautiful it was. And as soon as we got there, it was just a place that was like, it just, I felt that it was so beautiful. Like, in the city when we got there, um, our tour guide pointed out about how there are orange trees growing everywhere on the streets and such. And, um, you could smell them, you could smell the oranges and you could see them when you were walking by. And then, um, the architecture was gorgeous. We went to, um, the Plaza de España, if you know where that is. And everything was covered in porcelain tiles. And we didn't know how they got it so detailed. It was incredible. And then we were just walking around the streets and like seeing how life worked there. And I found myself kind of imagining what it would be like to live there as like an independent person. And like, sometimes we got to walk around by ourselves and like we got to choose where to have lunch. So it was just really cool to see like how a different people live and like how we might be able to live if we lived there.
Thank you.
Hi, so I'm Ella. Um, and the trip was really like an amazing trip. Like everyone has already said, it's like something that you'll never forget and you can like talk about for forever. I really enjoyed everything we did there. My favorite was when we were in Sevilla. That was probably great when we got to walk around the town. It's like you, you would spend a day walking around there and you felt like you knew where you were like after. And it just was like great talking to everyone in like the tapas and all the little stores and stuff. And it was, really was like a sense of like independence and a new experience to other cultures and stuff. It was really great. Um, so I really enjoyed my time there. And I feel like, um, going with everyone, I feel like we all were able to get closer and like build new relationships that like we never really had before the trip. So it was just a really great experience to be able to, um, go to another country and sense like, have like a sense of like independence and like new cultures and stuff.
Well, you can see, this is a very short video. Actually, I have like my phone is full of like a thousand pictures of me. So do you want to explain a little bit about what we did that?
So with this, we got to go to a flamenco dancing lesson kind of thing. And the, it was very interesting. It was very challenging. I can't lie, I'm not a great dancer. But it was definitely fun to learn a different culture style of dancing. And I had a pretty good time.
And then we went to show after that?
Oh, yeah, we did. We got to watch a show. Um, yeah, professional flamenco dancers danced. And it was, it was very impressive, at least.
It's the right era.
Yeah.
No?
Okay. So, yeah, this, yeah, this was, this was what I was talking about, the immersion school visit. So, yeah, we actually got to get split into groups. And then from those groups, you got to, you got randomly selected to go into a different classroom. Some of them were in chemistry, there was an English class, there was a math class. And, yeah, religion, a religion, a religion class. And I thought it was really interesting. I tried to get into the English class because I really wanted to see how they were taught. And honestly, half of the time, they didn't even care about learning the English. They just wanted to talk to us and hear what we had to say. And I think it was, on, I, the thing is, they, their English was incredible compared to my Spanish. And that's, that's the first thing I said. I was like, wow, your English is incredible. Because they had explained to me that they had been learning Spanish since they were in kindergarten. And hearing that honestly compared to how we learned, how we learned like foreign languages in America was shocking to me. Because I even heard one kid there say that he had an English tutor for almost all of his life. And just hearing how they have had foreign languages implemented into their lives to other daily like education is, I think, something that we could definitely utilize in the United States. And learning an English from, learning a Spanish from a younger age or a foreign language definitely should be used more. Because I think that would improve our, our speaking skills much more than only learning starting in sixth grade and kind of having it half every year. But it definitely taught me more about how they see our lifestyle and how I can, on that.
Oh, this is, um, were we there the first day? Second, second day? So this was where we were the first or second day. It was really pretty. It was the Plaza España. It had really beautiful architecture there. It was a really great view and stuff. And we got to go on tours and have some free time around there. So that was really fun. And then the churros, um, so the churros. Uh, I think it was like the last night or something, we all got to go, it was in Madrid. We went down and we went into this little churro shop, which was really like cool. We like kind of had to go down like some stairs and it was kind of like underground kind of. It was really cool. The churros were so good. I don't know if you can tell, but I'm in there, um, munching on my churros. Great picture. Um, and yeah, there's some more architecture there, which is really an outstanding piece in Spain. Which is like something to, that you can look forward to if you ever go.
And in that picture, we, you can see some of the other students that I might not recognize because they're from an all-boys school in New York, I think it was. And one of the big things that we combined with them when, like on our tour and on our trip, that's the whole thing, basically. And me and Lexi are still friends with the people that we met on that. And I think that that just goes to show how much this trip brought us together. And to like taught us how to make new relationships with people that we live far away from and also that you never would usually talk to. So it was definitely interesting and we still are in contact with them. So it's really, it's really cool.
Yeah, the trip kind of made us all feel like a family together, which was really like a good part. Because I just felt like, like I haven't really talked to a lot of like people who went on the trip. And then now it like got me talking to everyone and making new connections, which is really great. So.
Yeah, thank you so much. So this is, um, the service project that we did. It was after a long day of touring a national park, um, and which was really cool. We got to see a bunch of wildlife and explore the sand dunes. We saw a World War Two bunker. That's pretty cool. But, um, after we were done with that, we went to this beach and, um, we picked up trash that had been washed up on the beach. And it was really interesting to see like how these different items got there. Like there were some things that were definitely not from Spain, like they were from across the Atlantic Ocean. So how did they end up there? I thought it was interesting. And also, it just felt really good to like do something for the country that we were visiting to like help in some way. And it was also really fun.
Just to, oh, sorry, just to add a little bit of what Zoe mentioned, uh, that trash that the students come like in an hour, okay, let's get all the trash and kind of like analyze it. So the trash is not a public beach. It's not like they were cleaning the beach from like the people like left behind. It's, everything is, uh, that the ocean brings from who knows where. So they were kind of like, kind of like making some like conscience about like what products do we use and what items maybe end up in the ocean? And then maybe they appear somewhere else in the other side of the world, like, so that's it. So it's not a public beach. So that's a national park where nobody's there, just like we, they took us in a very special kind of truck, remember? With weightful dunes. And then we ended up there, like, so it was amazing. Yeah, we had, we were in the truck like, what?
For a long time.
Like two hours or something. Some students like took a nap. Yeah, because and, and everything is just by the beach, by the beach, by the beach. And then we stopped there and then, yeah, we, they, that's what they recollected in probably, I don't know, probably not even an hour, half an hour. And it was trash like from everywhere, like things that you have no idea. Do you remember what was the most common thing?
I don't remember.
It was ball caps and it was styrofoam and, uh, fish, fish and nets. I mean, some things just for them to kind of think about, maybe they think we use and just to kind of like open their minds of some other, uh, things. Not just languages, but also like understand other things that are going on in the other side of the world, like, uh, here, uh, you know. Yeah. So I don't know if there's anything else? Yeah. No, I think that's the last, like, oh, yeah, yeah, we had like so many, so many pictures. So, uh, we tried to recreate a story with just four pictures and a little piece of like a video, but I hope you enjoy it and I don't know if you have any questions?
Yeah. Questions?
I have questions.
Yes.
So this was Spain. And now there's a Costa Rica trip coming. Is this the same category of trip? Like it's an immersion trip as opposed, because there's two different types of trips that can occur in high school, right?
So, uh, for this one, for the, uh, Costa Rica one, so it says well, so we're going to a Spanish-speaking country. So that's why we're not going somewhere else. We're going to a Spanish-speaking country. And yes, we're gonna like have like experiences, activities, fun and kind of like activities for them to kind of like be able to communicate and have their time and understand what's going on. Yeah. So it's kind of like similar, but of course different because it's a different country. But yes, that's the idea. So we took students to, uh, Costa Rica in twenty twenty-three. And now because it was really popular and the kids really liked it and we like chaperones really kind of like enjoyed the trip. And we feel like it is a good kind of like place also for the students, uh, to go and kind of explore and learn. And, um, so that's why we're doing Costa Rica again, uh, in twenty twenty-six.
Now, do students have to take Spanish in order to participate?
Uh, not really. Like, we can have like, sometimes there's like students that might be from a bilingual home, that maybe they're fluent in Spanish. And then maybe they're taking French, but they want to take the, uh, advantage of these opportunities. I mean, they can, they can totally go even if they're taking French.
Okay. Any plans to go to a French-speaking country?
Uh, just actually next month, next month, a, a group of students, uh, is going to, they're going to, uh, France. Uh, with the, it's, it's gonna be the, uh, French immersion trip. And that's gonna be, so we're gonna probably try to go like every other year. So when you're Spanish, when you're French, when you're Spanish, when you're French.
And is it all grades that are allowed to go?
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, because I, we totally believe that every student can benefit from that, regardless of the level or regardless, yeah, of the level of the language. They can all kind of like learn and increase and kind of like understand like from freshman all the way to senior. So we believe.
And how many of you girls are gonna do this in college? Are you gonna do a semester abroad?
Just talking to the students about how I hope to, depending on what's division school and D two, D three, what scene, what, um, studying abroad programs they have. But I would be so interested in going back to Spain because, but it's only, only a week there, maybe fall in love. And I keep seeing, there's my phone of Spain and traveling abroad, which is making me reminisce and I really love to go back in college.
And we look at some students kind of like that went to Spain and now they're going to Costa Rica because they really kind of like it and they were.
That's great. Fabulous. Thank you.
Does this make it more or less likely you'd want to travel in the future?
Oh, yeah, it's maybe.
Yeah? That's great.
How many students go, get to go at each trip?
So for that one, we had like fifteen students. Uh, the previous year, we had ninety students. And right now, we have twenty-six students, and that's for Costa Rica.
That's great.
Wow.
That's great. Yeah. And I guess my only question is like going into it, like what was your, what was your, you talked about where you got out of it, but like what was your goal? Like what was the, did any of the students, like what, what were you hoping to get out of this?
Yeah. My personal goal was to see and adapt to a different lifestyle and also honestly practice my Spanish. Which, which was a lot easier, I'd say, in Spain because the people there are so nice and they're understanding that you want to practice a different language. And they're very receptive to that. So they will adjust your, my Spanish speaking level. So I think going into it, I was just hoping to see different, see a different way of life, see how people live and talk to people. So just gain overall new experiences.
Thank you. I think that my, um, reason for wanting to go was not only just because I wanted to go to a different country. Because I love traveling to new places, but also to become more independent. Because I never, I had never been to a different country that wasn't like a US state. So, um, see, I had never gone outside of the country. So I was like, I was ready to explore, like, see new places, new countries that I hadn't seen. And this was also the first trip that I took without my parents. So it was really interesting to like be on my own for a while.
Do you prefer without the parents? You don't have to have.
There's, there's pros and cons to it.
True. True.
Nice answer. Our rapid-fire, um, favorite food that you've had in Spain?
The croquetas, I would call.
Oh, croquetos?
Yeah. I'm just a paella.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I like paella. My churros are pretty good.
I know, we Chinese eat.
Oh, my goodness, this is such a funny story. So, um, when we went to this tapas place, um, they served us a lot of little things, like a croquetas that she mentioned. And also like a bunch of fried stuff. And, um, one thing that they served was fried anchovies. And everyone was like disgusted, like no one wanted to try it, but I ate three of them because they were so good. And everyone was like, are you crazy? That's so gross, but I loved them.
Oh, God.
Great. Great presentation, guys. Thank you.
So great.
One last comment I'd like to make is, uh, and this, I should have made it earlier, but great job just public speaking.
Yeah.
You know, that's not an easy thing too. And as you've been up there and sort of warmed up, you've all sort of realized it's not so bad. But it's something I could never do when I was your age. And I just have the greatest admiration for everybody who, who gets up here and, and risks it and realizes, wow, it's not so bad. So congratulations.
For all the groups.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. So, uh.
Can I suggest we do the, um, the club approvals first?
Oh, sure.
Before the, you know, studies.
And your club approvals, okay.
Travel.
Oh, we got more students here still? Okay.
Great idea.
High school presentation's done.
Great job. Thanks to everyone.
You mean the overlay? Are we talking about the trip request?
I'm sorry.
Overnight trip requests, yes.
Through the chair.
Yes.
We consider the, the club, the trip request.
Overnight trip request.
Thank you.
Is four presentations the record for school committee rep? I don't know.
Maybe the single day record, right?
I don't know, I think it might be. Okay, so we have two requests, I'm guessing this is the student council trip.
Yes, so um, this is our, I wanna say third year in a row going to the MASC State Conference, which stands for Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. Um, representing North Reading High School, so I guess we kind of did like a little one pager. Um, but MASC State Conference, so fifteen student council members who applied to and have been approved to represent North Reading High School Student Council in a three-day, two-night state conference in Hyannis, Massachusetts. So basically we just get on a bus, pack our bags and we head down to Hyannis. Um, over the school year, our student council participates in three student council leadership conferences. One on the statewide level and two on the regional level. Um, but this year, we're just looking for approval to go again, so the cost is two hundred fifty dollars per student. Typically, this year it was raised to three seventy, but with the amount of money that our council has raised, we were able to lower it to two fifty for each student, just to make it a little bit more um, accessible. It's three days, two nights and we stay at the Emerald Resort and Conference Center. Um, and what do we do there? So three days of workshops, we do a polar plunge at the beginning. Um, there's two keynote speakers and we get awards and we have a banquet and more. So this year our council is nominated for, for the second year in a row, the top ten award. I wanna say maybe like the tenth year for the Council of Excellence, I think we're going on a decade for that. Um, and then we've nominated our advisor, Ms. Gilbert, for Advisor of the Year. And then we have a student nominated for the Unsung Hero Award. Along with um, I'm campaigning to be a state board officer. So yeah, I would just say like, along with obviously the information on paper, the opportunities that we get for this conference is like absolutely wild, this will be my third year in a row going. Um, I have met countless number, countless people from this conference, learned so many leadership skills. Um, just built like my team building, my public speaking, obviously I'm standing up here today, kind of outside my comfort zone. But yeah, we just meet so many students and advisors from around the state, kind of allowing us to network and get to know others of anything else.
I mean, this is like, I think if you go through our text messages, we talk about this like once every three days, like I miss Hyannis, it's kind of the only thing we talk about.
Yeah, but I think this is it, just for the on paper kind of information. But just having the opportunity to be part of the student council on a statewide level, obviously North Reading is so prestigiously looked at from other um, organizations and especially like on the Special Olympics level. We were able to receive the golden plunger last year, which we will have to give away this year. But because we were able to be the first, you know, student council in town to host the mobile polar plunge, we were kind of looked at as like up there in this community.
Last year we did have a pretty clean sweep of the awards. We took practically everything, at least for the northeastern division.
Yeah, yeah.
Who vo- who votes on that?
There's a committee of like the state advisors, so there's four regions in Massachusetts, northeast, southwest and central. So they take like the main advisors from there and then the state director. And they will go through like, so for example, like the top ten award, we'll be submitting for one of the events that we hosted. Um, they'll read through all the awards in the state and they pick ten events. Or like Council of Excellence, we submit a binder of all the events and activities that we've done. Um, Advisor of the Year, Michelle Pratt and I wrote a recommendation for our advisor, an Unsung Hero Award. We were able to nominate a student who hasn't really been recognized for his contributions to our council. So hopefully we're able to take some of those home this year, but.
Great.
Yeah.
First off, this is not your like area of expertise, public speaking? Wow, um, that's great, uh, you know, you guys set the bar really high and that's fantastic.
Thank you.
So can I have a motion to approve the student council trip to Hyannis?
I move to approve the student council trip to Hyannis.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second and discussion, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, pacify zero, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank goodness we have two others, I know.
I know, imagine if it was like, nope.
While we're here, I'm just gonna do the other two quickly. So we have a baseball trip, which we all had in our packet, this is our annual trip to Cooperstown. Nobody's here for this, right, correct?
No one is here for this.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the baseball trip to Cooperstown?
I move, even though it's a lot, they're not, I love the enthusiasm of these guys. Move to approve the uh, baseball trip to Cooperstown.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. And then there's a DECA trip as well. I don't think I saw anything in the packet on that.
I, I added it uh, today, um, we didn't have any.
Too late, Dr. Daly.
He said you'd say that.
I know.
So the person who's gonna present is not well, so I just shared this here. We have fourteen DECA members competing at the uh, state conference. Um, it will be December tenth and eleventh, that doesn't make sense, I'm sorry, those are the previous ones. February twenty-seventh to March first, two nights at the Seaport District. Uh, these are the costs. Three to four individuals a room, two chaperones, that'll be transported by the school van. We've approved this in recent years as well, it's quite an event, we have placed well.
Fine with me, can I have a motion to approve the DECA trip?
Move to approve the DECA trip.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous.
I just wanna add, I was a judge for the DECA competitions in December.
Yep.
And uh, I had done it a couple of years prior and was able to do it again. It's yeah, it's a, it's a really, that the organization has a lot of things kind of going in the right direction. And our kids um, really enjoy it. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say I, I was actually seated next to uh, a gentleman who was working with one of our students. And, and after that student left, the, the guy turned to me and said, she just knocked it out of him. You know, so uh, the, the energy around DECA is uh, very real.
Great to hear.
While we're at it, we also have an MASC Principal of the Year.
Administrative of the Year, yeah.
Administrative of the Year, yeah. So we're just gonna go back, if it's okay through you.
Program of studies.
Studies and then.
We don't have to, we don't have to approve these tonight, do we?
So we are um, we are going to discuss both uh, this and the other bigger uh, presentation you did not receive in advance. Um, because we were working on it as it's very bleeding edge information, so.
Is that the local graduation separate? Well, the only thing I might ask is if, if this is gonna be long, can we take a three-minute break? Are, are we just doing the program of study?
This one's faster.
Okay, let's do that and then take a quick break.
Yeah, so there's, we are not offering any new courses for the twenty-five, twenty-six programs.
Great presentation.
Uh, we, we do have some, some subtle changes though and I am, I'm, I'm assuming you'll be on board, but uh, you know, we always talk about the accessibility of courses and how do we make it a, a school and an academic program that allows more, more students to access more courses? While we do wanna have prerequisites and things like that, um, it was nice to see that the, you know, in some of the science classes and in some of the performing arts classes, they're looking to remove some of the prereqs. Again, get students in, in sooner. Um, and through review and curriculum, review and discussion, those made, those made sense.
Actually, i- if you don't mind, while we're going through it, just real quick questions while we go. On this one, the teachers were, were okay with it, they weren't worried that the, the teachers were the ones suggesting.
Derived, teacher originated.
That's, that's what I just wanted to confirm.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We talked about, you know, in the, in the past, we had a cap on the PE hours for juniors and seniors that you were earning from marching band or maskers and things like that. And it was kind of like, if you're watching what the band is doing these days, if you're watching what maskers is doing these days, the idea that you would say, oh, well, you can only get half of your PE hours from, from maskers, you know, uh, and marching band, I mean, the, the, the displays that we have, it's, it's, it's great, so. Those are one for one now hours. The MCAS language obviously has changed and the competency determination and that's gonna be kind of our segue into the next part of the presentation.
Okay.
Break?
Yes.
Break, quick break, I'll be back.
Thank you.
You're watching the marching band practice, it's more intense than a gym class. We're out there marching, god, for two hours, we're out there one night.
Yeah, but it's bands, so I mean, come on.
It's good to drink a lot of water, I've been trying to drink a lot of water, but there's negative things that come from that.
The wifi is especially stubborn tonight, usually I can get on one ear or another.
I was in Boston all day, so like I had to review the, this weekend and.
When did you decide to go for the um, the whatever look that is?
I don't know, whatever look that is.
Wow.
Whatever look.
I actually really like it, I think it looks great, I think you look very debonair.
Thank you.
I like that.
We'll try it for a little bit.
The rest of us?
Try it for a little bit and we'll see.
No, I like it, it's very now.
I know, I cut it off, I, I could never had a beer, I've never like,
It looks cool.
Shaved it or anything, so like I don't know how to do it well. I know, I know, I know. But I didn't know what it was, I was like, I thought it wasn't low, I had a big thing on, but I didn't know it pressed down as much, I was like, whoops.
Wolfman.
Don't start doing that.
How do you get on, do you use your hotspot?
What time does the playoff game start tonight, is that on seven thirty? Eight o'clock?
It's not past.
Yeah, no, usually it's just like it's just thinking and thinking.
Eight o'clock playoff game, people.
For what sport?
Football.
Oh, we're gonna make it. Wait, football, wait, Monday, oh, I guess the Monday night football.
Story that was. Women's hoop, Pittsburgh versus, I wanna say like SMU maybe?
No.
So they were, so the largest comeback in NCAA history. They, they um, were down maybe forty-eight to eighteen or something like that at halftime. Pit was, they held um, SMU scoreless in the third quarter, twenty-eight, nothing flipped. And then outscored them by like another fifteen or something in the fourth quarter and won by twelve. Crazy.
Wow, you don't see many scoreless quarters.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, the basketball, the entire.
Basketball, yeah. Okay. Mr. Clean, are you leading us in the uh, discussion on graduation requirements?
Do you want to advance it?
Probably better if I, than, than me doing it. Oh wait, we should give you a, oh, you have a mic, just take the mic if you're gonna.
This is something that actually when I came, I think it was probably in November, I did the MCAS review right after question two.
Right.
Desi kind of came out, just, we had makeups the next day right after the election that we ran through. Um, and there was kind of like a little bit of a pause before we were able to get some direction. And then most recently, when we started to put things together, uh, our, our school system's in a great place as far as the class of twenty twenty-five and going through. Alright, so when we go through the Massachusetts graduation requirements, it's important to understand that we have our local um, graduation requirements that we put in the program of studies, that tells us how many credits we need to take um, in what courses. And then we have the state requirements that include what is called the competency determination. So when you hear the word CD, that's the competency determination. And prior to question two, um, that was what we used MCAS for in ELA, math and science. And then students who meet all local but not CD requirements may be eligible for what we call a certificate of attainment. And then going through there. This was just the language that was in question two. As you can see, uh, I stressed down the end where it goes, the MCAS should be demonstrated mastery of common core skills, competency and knowledge in these areas as measured by the assessment instruments described in section one of that statute, which is the MCAS assessment. And then the language itself changes right here, it's the red that comes through. Uh, so you take away the assessment, it says by satisfactorily completing coursework that has been certified by the students district is showing mastery of the skills, competencies and knowledge contained in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks. And that they hold us to the same content areas that were tested in the, in the grades of the high school for English, math and science. We're stressing the coursework versus the courses, so we have to be able to, to certify that the students are demonstrating mastery of those skills, competencies, knowledge in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks, which would be at the tenth grade level. Biology for us is in, in ninth grade. So then the confusion becomes, what's the, you know, people that don't know that they don't know the graduation requirements ver- versus the competency determination and why aren't they the same? And the, the reason is, is that the graduation requirements, although ours, which are pretty high, have a, have a performance threshold in there, it really wasn't necessarily sent to match up with what the state would say is a competency determination. Um, so the, Desi really stresses the importance of having two different policies as related to your local graduation requirement and what a competency determination should be. So this just straits, um, this is what's in the program of studies, which you guys just reviewed before. This is what our courses, this exceeds what they call mass core, we discussed that briefly, which just kind of lays out for college and career readiness, what um, higher ed and, and what Massachusetts says we want all our students to experience before applying and getting into college and career. Um, our coursework that we require for our students actually exceeds the mass core requirements in a couple of places. So we're in a great place there. Um, as part of, as I mentioned earlier, the, this is, this is language from the program of studies. It tells us exactly what courses we expect all of our students to take, so it really helps when the parents are sitting down with their students or caregivers to work through course selection um, and moving forward through there. It includes, we have a couple of language changes that we're discussing, but it's the PE requirements in here. Um, when we talk about civics and government, we're talking about the civics action plan that all students are required to complete. Um, and a couple of, and the math, we're still having conversations about um, algebra one, geometry and whether it should be algebra two or not as well, as part of that.
So then our, our current, this is current, it actually doesn't have math in there at the moment, so that's gonna be a change.
So as a district, we wanna kind of organize ourselves in next steps, cause this is all going pretty quickly. But like I said, we're in a great place, we don't have one student in the class of twenty twenty-five that hasn't demonstrated the competency determination through MCAS. So what we need to do is we need.
So this would be for next year's student, like?
No.
It will be for all students.
No, but, but I mean, this year, everybody's already determined the competency determination, so the first grade that possibly could have a student?
Not necessary.
Because of somebody, yeah, if somebody, the um, so the graduation requirements, the things that we need to be doing is we just wanna review our courses, make sure they're current. Review the PE requirements, make any adjustments, add the civics project and the genocide studies, which was put into tw- uh, two thousand twenty-two uh, state regulation. This is where we talked about the algebra one and geometry and the completion of algebra two. Um, or an integrated math equivalent, because it gives a little bit of um, the pathways for the math courses can be a lot different. because it gives a little bit of, um, the pathways for the math courses can be a lot different. Then we have to really focus on what we want our development of a CD to be for North Reading Public Schools, uh, which then, once we define that, we would come back before the school committee, uh, well, we'd work with the sub, um, committee with policy and then come back to the school committee. We would wanna include the CD in the program of studies, the competency determination, so we understand what we're talking about there. And then really be more specific about twenty twenty-five and beyond.
Just hold on one second. So just to clarify, what we're saying here, there, the graduation requirements that are laid out need a few revisions anyway. We wanna add in these pieces. When I looked at our policy IHF, and we did discuss this with policy subcommittee briefly, there are some updates that need to happen to that either way. I think our suggestion is to update that now, and it's, it's, the way IHF is written is that it's really the high school principal with the superintendent's approval that approves these two pieces. But I do think we should have the, the basic language in a policy, and, and Desi kind of feels that way too, just because this is going to impact students. And it's not just the, we'll get into this in a second, but not just the current twenty twenty-five, but it may impact others. So, um, the, the pieces there, um, I'll hold, I'll hold on that.
You're doing the same thing. Just keep going. So when we look at, so we're looking at the three kind of different ways to go about it. We have the class of twenty twenty-five, which is, which is the first one, the students who have taken and met MCAS requirements. All right, so we will be able to certify that these students have met competency determination in ELA math and science. Using the two thousand twenty-three or two thousand twenty-four MCAS scores can be used for students in the graduating class of twenty-five and twenty-six. And/or, and then this is where we have to kind of put that first line of what that competency determination should be if there were any students in this current graduating class, and I think it's on the next slide as far as the other part through there. But what we identified, and this is, um, common around districts across the state, kind of starting, right? Because we test in tenth grade, because that's where the competency determination happens. With MCAS, it was done because if the students didn't pass, you'd wanna be giving them multiple opportunities to pass so they could earn that competency determination. So the regulation statute still asks us to measure that competency at tenth grade. So we're looking at successful completion of grade nine and grade ten English, successful completion of algebra one and geometry, and successful completion of biology, because that was the science te- MCAS test that we gave in twenty twenty-three, which we've given for multiple years.
Okay, question here.
Yeah.
So you said in the beginning, local graduation requirements and competency determination are different things. But you're saying here, comp, the competency determination would be completing part of the local graduation requirements.
Correct.
Are grade nine and grade ten English and algebra one and geometry and biology all part of the local?
So there's, there's overlap. We're gonna talk a lot about what successful completion means. This is just for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so this is gonna be, this is, okay, there's another slide that says it's gonna be slightly different.
Well, we're gonna talk about that.
So after twenty twenty-five, we'll get into twenty twenty-six. Or this is for twenty twenty-five for students who haven't taken MCAS.
But twenty twenty-five, we were, what I was saying before, like, we're set on twenty twenty-five.
So technically, right now, we're set. If somebody moves here tomorrow from California,
Yes.
they can no longer take MCAS. So in the past, they would have taken MCAS. Now they have.
For current students right now that we know of.
Just because we are, and there's also, we're gonna get into, there's a piece of this where people can come back. So I don't wanna say we're set. That, that's why I'm just.
So we're set for the current enrolled people, yes, okay.
Current students, right, but I'm trying to frame this, and we're trying to frame this, as twenty twenty-five. And then I wanna be really clear that we're going to be revisiting this, because there's a lot of things that are gonna come out in the next year. So I don't wanna say right now, this is exactly how it's gonna look for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. But first piece is sort of getting through this right now. So we've highlighted the word successful completion, because there's gonna be a lot of discussion around what that means. So when the graduation requirements, it's completion of a course. We're talking, remember that word of, um, we're gonna get into it a little bit about what that means for mastery? So the difference between completing a course and is it passing a course, is it, and we'll get into that a little bit, uh, more. But what it actually means to have competency is what we're gonna have to decide and come up with.
So I appreciate you putting this in there in case there's a move in or.
Yeah.
Move, or somebody comes back.
Yeah, it's, we, we had to go back and forth. Why do we need this slide? But it's, it's just in case, and I just wanted to be fairly clear. Because if someone does, we wanna say you don't meet that, that other standard.
Makes sense. It's kind of like an action plan, like a developing action plan that we keep reviewing.
Yeah, and just to be clear that the, any reto, that there still will be retests,
Yep.
but they can't not be used for the CD. They're gonna be used for other purposes, but no longer for the CD. But any tests that were taken through November can be used.
Why could they not be used going forward?
Because they happened at, I'm sorry, why could they not?
Why can they not be used going forward?
The statute's been in play in January.
Yeah, as soon as the statute became official.
MCAS can't be used as the competency determination anymore. But because of the students have already passed that before it went in act, it's competency determination.
So a couple of questions on that though, because I've seen rumors that like some school committees are going to require the completion of, or the, the, the MCAS in order to do, to meet the competency determination.
So they can't, yeah, they can't do that, but they can make it for the graduation requirement.
They can make it for the graduat-, okay, they're moving to the other part.
Yep.
But could you, even if you didn't require it, could that be that, you're, they're saying even going forward, that couldn't be one of the ways in which you meet competency determination?
Then that's what the law said. You cannot use MCAS for competency determination. So you can only use MCAS up through twenty twenty-four. Once the law goes through, any test taken after that time can no longer be used, so.
I, I was wondering if it was an optional thing where you could still have this one option.
You are, you are starting to see some, and I don't think that's, uh, I wouldn't recommend as a direction for our community where they're putting the MCAS as a graduation requirement, as your local. So we'd be able to determine that versus the competency determination that we have to submit to the state.
I don't think you have fear of that here.
Yes.
So then after kind of taking care of, of this first tier, we then have to develop what we're doing for competency determination for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. As I mentioned, twenty-six is in a pretty good place. Most of our students have met, uh, competency determination that have taken MCAS, um, in twenty-four. But we still have to work through defining what mastery of commons, core skills, competencies, and knowledge, um, should look like. Uh, the completion of, of the course, what a performance threshold might be for the grade. Are we looking at common assessments, different common assessments to establish a baseline for competency determination? We wanna incorporate the vision of the graduate that they're working on as part of the NEAS to make sure it reflects what we want there. And then we, the standards across districts, like right, we're, right now, we're in charge of the local, um, competency determination, but there is going to be what is happening here and there, and we are expecting probably some more level of direction or collaboration with other districts across the state to kind of be as consistent as possible, but also wanna make sure that it reflects what we want our students to know before they, they graduate.
Can I ask a very basic question? Why is there a need for a competency determination versus a local graduation requirement? I'm not trying to argue anything, I'm just wondering.
Because of the law.
But, could I mean, could you just say the competency determination is the local graduation requirement? Like if you meet the local graduation requirement, you'd be, meet the competency determination?
We would have.
Would you have to have a different standard?
I think if we were to say that, we would not be demonstrating mastery of those skills. We would have to say the completion of those courses equals the mastery of the skills. And so, but part of what, I'll say it here, I'm gonna say it later. I am gonna advocate for, and I hope the committee will support, having the higher, the, you know, unless someone is unreasonable, I would want North Reading to have the highest standard. I wouldn't want it to be that in these other three towns, you have to do this, and in North Reading, you only have to do this, because right now, you know, with MCAS, it was a standard, now everything's all over the place. So I would hope, you know, you don't want colleges looking at North Reading applicants saying, well, you know, their, their diploma's not quite where others are. So those are the things when we talk about standardization, what we wanna look at. We, we do address it in another slide. I fully anticipate more guidance on this and more either new legislation coming out or new things coming out. But it's really that difference between seat time and the, you know, even the conversation around, wow, that teacher's a lot easier than that teacher, and I passed that class and you didn't, versus what is a standard through some kind of common assessment or at least getting a certain grade in a course and what that actually looks like.
So is that kind of defining what the word mastery is? Is that what we're, okay.
Which, in education, we've been, I mean, as our administrative team, we've been debating that since I've been here for fifteen years. We have a lot of debate about what mastery actually looks like, so we gotta figure it out in two weeks to print it in the program of study now. So again, our goal is that we're gonna put in general guidance that's gonna help, but I wanna be clear tonight, starting with this presentation, that this is gonna be an evolving thing as we get more information. With all this.
Right, so then that, this is what we have to take into consideration as we're not ready to roll out specifically what the competency determination is, because we're still awaiting for the possibility of more guidance from Desi, um, through legislation or new standards. We haven't been told yet. We expect that it probably will at some point, that Desi will collect the competency determinations from, from all the municipalities in the, in the state to kind of be able to look at what we're putting out and saying, this is acceptable. This is a little bit below an, an average, but that's gonna take time if we're just starting to do this. And then we wanna, we still need to kind of define that mastery, if it's going to be performance expectations, using any of our assessments that we use that are common, um, through our core courses, even with different teachers. And then also a way for, um, students to demonstrate competency through the portfolio process might be something that we get more direction from and what that could look like.
Just a note on that. So, you know, we, I fully expect the collection from Desi, maybe the approval, but they love to just have us make sure we're doing it to me, you know, so that, that work will be there. The competency portfolio, I think there's been about three hundred maybe since MCAS started. So this is not the alt portfolio. This is students through their proficiency plans who demonstrated proficiency in a different way through a portfolio. So they're saying like, maybe districts might come up with something like that as well for exceptional cases.
Which is still determining, um, demonstrating the mastery of the coursework and the skills.
Right, whereas the alt is not that. The alt is not the standard and would lead to a certificate of attainment. This is something that would still lead to a CD and a graduation diploma. So this is the work that lies ahead, revising the committee policy and the program of studies as that happens.
And then just things that we have to, this is where it gets confusing, right? Because we're saying MCAS is not a competency determination, but all of our students are still going to be taking MCAS in grades three through ten, uh, will begin, participation is gonna be required by federal and state law. There is no opt-out. They need to take the test. Um, that will be reflective in our accountability ratings, which is always a ninety-five percent, um, participation rate. We are still using, we didn't delete that part, um, the MCAS performance thresholds for, there's, uh, two scholarships that the state offers to get access to state universities if you perform, um, at a certain performance level. And then also, um, the seal of by literacy, we have cut scores that are included as part of the MCAS to demonstrate your English proficiency in addition to when you take your, um, world language test, whatever that might be.
And retests would still be allowable for those as well, so they, they do see retests continuing, um, probably much smaller numbers.
As they will with MCAS alt as well, because that is what holds districts accountable for student growth and learning, um, for all students. So it goes through there in that free and appropriate education to be able to go through. If we've identified that students might not, um, be successful with the MCAS assessment, we're still identifying standards that we are working with to show proficiency for all students.
I think that's pretty consistent. You know, I don't, I don't think that we need to be defensive about like, yeah, where it's not a competency, um, determination or it's not being used the same way as it was, but we're still using it as, as a primary, if not important, indicator. And I, I think that's great. I think that's what it's, that's, that's the goal.
That's it, and that, that leads it right, that's a good segue. We use that data because it's subjective, it's outside and coming in. We use it for a lot of operations that we have. If we find areas in our curriculum that isn't meeting the needs of students, that's where we're spending time to revise or look at materials, best practices for instruction. We use it for some of our student placement on courses, starting as early as seventh grade in math. And then interventions and support, when we talk about MTSS, we use a lot of this data to kind of prescribe what interventions may look like for our students to make sure we're giving them every opportunity to demonstrate mastery in those skills.
Again, I think we're being very consistent in that regard.
So it's a lot. I think the hard, I think the biggest piece in the education component is the graduation requirement and the competency determination, because even when we're having conversations about it, you interchange that language sometimes.
Yeah.
So it becomes a little bit more difficult to do that, um, and we wanna be thoughtful, um, as we consider how the law changed and then what we wanna do to represent for our students for CD. So there's still more to come, but this is just kind of that outline, because I think it's gonna start picking up more and more as far as news, media, things like that.
I love that we're using this as an opportunity to, uh, improve might seem like the wrong word, but it's, you know, it's, we're, we're using it as an opportunity to get better, and I think that's great. I think that's the, I think that's the plus side of, of this. I know there are other downsides to it, but, uh, I, I think that's the plus side, and I think we're taking advantage of that. I think that's great.
So, Dr. Daly.
This was, so as you can imagine, this has been a hot topic. The, the original conversation that I had with Mr. Lepred and Mr. Clean, you know, we thought about changing language in the handbook and just taking out the word MCAS and sort of updating. Department of Ed came out and clarified, they really said, not only should you have a separate competency determine language, but make it very clear, and they strongly recommended that you have it in policy. They didn't necessarily say school committee, but I, to me, when I look at our IHF, which talks about graduation requirements, I think we do graduation requirements and competency determination. We have a paragraph for each similar, I'm gonna say almost placeholder language, maybe not the specifics of exactly what it is, um, and similar with the book, and then it's gonna evolve. And I think that's a policy we might be updating regularly over the next few years. But, um, I think we need to have something clear that's voted on by the committee that if there is a student who comes in and says, well, what do you mean? I can't grad-, like, we wanna be clear what that actually means. And the good news is, and, you know, there are districts that are really struggling to figure something out quickly, because they've got twenty-five, thirty students who this now are in a different boat than they were. We actually don't. All of our students at the moment are, are included. So I think we're, it's a little bit less urgent, but I think we can still follow these steps and, and do it the right way, so.
I have thoughts and comments, but I'll let other people know first. Anybody else know?
I have a, just to educate me. What's, why, if a student does pass the MCAS or meets, meets expectations on the MCAS, why is it not allowed to be used as one of the several criteria as meeting a CD? Like, it would seem to be counterintuitive. Like, if my child met expectations on tenth grade MCAS.
Yeah.
That's, that's exactly what that question two was.
But as, but it was requiring it before saying letting it be one of multiple options.
As the competency determination. So now it's saying you cannot use it as the competency determination. You have to come up with your own local, and obviously you couldn't do that, because that'd be just counter to the law. And that's why.
It just seems counterintuitive.
And that's why you're seeing some punt and put it in the graduation requirements, because they might be okay for a couple of years. I, I don't necessarily think that's.
See, because my preference is apparently, if you meet expectations, if we had to say three criteria as a school committee to meet the CD, and MCAS was one of three ways to get there.
In the classic, right, when we talk about meeting expectations.
That would have been a much better ballot question.
And when we talk about meeting expectations, the cut scores have now, in twenty twenty-six is one of the first years that they're bumping it up, and then twenty thirty, they're bumping it up even more. So to earn that, um, it was gonna get a little bit harder and harder, and I think that's another reason why it might have.
To your hypothetical, if it's one of three things, what if that's the thing that makes you fall below?
No, 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 you only had to hit one of the three options. And so if eighty-nine percent of the students hit that, then you're only worried about the eleven percent. Rather than us, we're, now we're making policy and having to invent our own CD for the entire district. And to, and to be fair, we already had that. We already had multiple pathways. We had MCAS, and then we had competency determination, and we had portfolio. And there were ninety-nine percent of students that already met it. I know, that was more education for me, because when people talk to me in the community, I wanna be born. I was opposed to it for those reasons.
How many people do you think misunderstood this question?
Everybody.
I mean, I think most people thought.
They thought it was just getting rid of it. That's what everyone thought, yeah.
Right.
Well, I think, you're reading, you had something else, or?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Wait till he goes.
My, my big, Dr. Daly and I are usually in alignment of both things. I don't know if we'll be aligned completely on these things. But, um, I mean, I, I'm interested to see what it is, because to me, what the voters were saying, even if they didn't understand the specifics of the ballot question, is they don't want one size fits all for everything in education. And so I don't know, when I ask like, why do we need this, like, I don't know that I see the same, the same, I don't know if I have the same concern about like, well, if North Reading lets a kid that's struggling, you know, pass a course, now Harvard's gonna let him in because they passed North Reading. I mean, I think, okay, maybe. I mean, I think, okay, maybe they get into a school later on, like, I don't see a huge harm in letting a kid graduate, frankly, and getting a diploma. If, again, if we're still teaching good subjects and everything else here. And so, my big concern is just not having it be one size fits all, whatever, whatever it is. And possibly having exceptions to the rules for very specific situations, you know, and that where like IEPs can specifically, you know, be modified to that student's needs. Because the idea of an IEP is to make education accessible to the student, and I think that education should lead, have a pathway to a diploma. And that's what I want to see, whatever it is. If, again, if there's a student that, you know, is missing a lot of classes and like, and that maybe, maybe attendance is a part of it. You know, like, if the student's missing a lot of class, not putting the work in, that's fine, but if there are specific needs, and I think that's what a lot of people were concerned about with the other one, is making it seem like one size fits all, and that's what I would just be looking to see is that, you know, something there, some flexibility or whatever.
They made it very clear that you have to have the same standard, and, and you can't have the, if the IEP is written to the standards of twenty-twenty-three MCAS, which is sophomore, basically what we have up there. But if a student's IEP is life skills, that you can't, you cannot amend to make that a graduation requirement. So, the students still have to be able to demonstrate through coursework the, the twenty-twenty-three standards, which would be algebra one geometry, you know, the tenth grade equivalency. And even more so, we're responsible for, for FAP. And so we cannot have a student that goes through the school that doesn't meet those standards and call that a graduation requirement. So, I don't disagree with you that, that some people did think that's what the spirit of it was, but it's not legal to do.
And the department on FAP was very, very.
Yeah, very clear, they're very concerned about.
More guidance for that, because that's the one that's saying, okay, now your students don't have to demonstrate the test. You can put them in classes and give them the grades and pass through and not have, not be responsible for the learning, which would let us off the hook for, for quite a bit of work, if we think about what we put into our special education programs, staffing, at levels like that to, to help students grow and learn.
Well, I think, again, I think hypothetically, we'll, we can go, you know, keep talking about it, I think we just need to try to put pen to paper and look at the specifics of it. And, again, I think a competency determination, again, there could be a level, but then I, I, I think you could create theoretically a level that is met in a couple of different ways, I would think you could do that in some way, so.
I think the work here is to hopefully come up with something better than what we had, and it might look, end up looking a lot similar. I mean, I've heard a lot of districts talking about, well, we got to develop common assessments, we got to, well, we had a common assessment. We still taking it every year, and now we have to do another one, so there's going to be a lot of discussion, a lot of questioning. But we do want to come up with, with something that can move us forward. So we see some inroads here to include other things, like we talked today, genocide studies, civics action project that are in our program of studies. They should just be a part of it, those are laws just as much as taking P every year is, and so we need to make sure that those are clear for everyone and those expectations. And there's a lot of, you know, important pieces that will come from this. I think, you know, we, we're going to continue to get, to get more guidance. One, one of the things that's going to be a little bit tricky now is there's, there's a certain amount of onus on this, that the districts not only are coming up with the standards, but have to communicate out to the students and the families. You know, it's no longer this idea that MCAS is the barrier, it's now whatever we're telling you is the barrier, and that's, that's a challenge. So, um, this is the first step, though, is having this conversation openly and publicly, so.
I think you hinted at it earlier, but I think what's also kind of important is whether we like it or not, colleges are going to rank the North Reading School District against our peer districts when it comes to college admissions. So how do we, how do we find that balance to being rated in a spot where our students deserve to get into those colleges and universities that they're working so hard to get into, and where, how do we, because I, I, I don't envy the challenge ahead.
I think very clearly, I mean, it is an article, there's an opinion piece in the Globe today about it, that right now, there's different standards. We're, we're going to try to, whatever we have to do, whether it's some kind of approval process or something, they're going to need some kind of baseline. Because we're, we're not going to be one random, but districts are doing it naturally anyway, like Sean said, we're sharing, you know, there's folders popping up. Everyone's popping up their ideas, and we're all stealing good ideas and trying to have consistent language, consistent work. But, um, that's where you're seeing a lot of this language around algebra one, geometry, and then possibly algebra two, we talked about as well, just for the graduation, because that's what the colleges require, so.
Well, more to come, it seems, yes. Thank you for the initial presentation. It's good, if nothing else, to understand local graduation requirements versus competency determination, so.
I knew a lot more about it now after preparing, so.
There we go.
My apologies for not, we, we were, we had something ready, Mr. Clean had something ready, but I still had some questions I wanted to fine tune, and I didn't want to share it until we had them ready, so I apologize for.
I understood, you just didn't want me to be prepared for it.
Yeah, yeah.
You need a curve ball.
It's okay, um, okay, next is the E-Apple Little School Principal Search Timeline.
So, as you know, we're in the midst of a high school principal search, we are now starting the next step. I did take the liberty of a few first steps here, hopefully this timeline will look good to everyone here. But I'm planning to do some virtual parent focus groups at the little school on the seventeenth. I have sent out information requesting some interest in being a part of these groups. We have enough interest to have filled all the slots, we did have a school committee member who's already put in here. If there's not objection, you know, we can discuss that here a little bit, but Mr. Sutherland did put in for that. The leadership team member is Gina Sacco from the Student Services Department. We have more than two parents, so I'm working to figure out the parents and the teachers. And we, we do have a school nurse, psychologist counselor, someone from that group put in. We have paraprofessional, administrative assistant, so we, we have a great team that's ready to come together. The idea would be that that would be posted January twenty-seventh, we would have a, a, a nice long window again. Applications due on the twenty-first, give people some time over break to get those applications in. We then review in late February, conduct our interviews in mid-March. Hopefully have our finalists by the end of March, have some site visits, and, you know, a similar process to what we did for high school at the little school in late March, and hopefully have a name for you in April, on our April seventh. Sure that'll be a busy, that's, that's usually right around budget, budget hearing season, right? Um, and then July first start date, so any questions about the timeline?
I will just say, I participated as a member of the community in the interviews the other day with Mr. Sutherland, and I thought that was very well done, and it was a nice opportunity, I heard it was a long day for the candidates.
It was.
Long day, they're going to be long days as principals, so, I might as well get used to it, so, um, and so I thought that was really well done. And so if we follow a similar sort of arrangement, I think that would be nice. Would have been nice for more than Mr. Sutherland and I show up, I mean, there was a couple of people there, but.
I was on virtually, sitting in a parking lot in Melrose.
There were a few other parents there, but most, most of the parents had like specific titles, or like they were on whatever, so.
Yeah, I was surprised not to see more community members on there, to be honest.
For the high school in particular.
Big thing, yeah.
Right, so.
We did have, I mean, due to President Carter's, there was no mail that day, the transcript didn't go out that day. So, we may see more people on the sixteenth than we saw on the ninth from the community, not sure.
Or we may not.
It's a lot of good info, we, we learned a lot about the candidates.
Yeah.
In that, you know, forty minutes that we got to spend with them.
Yeah, I think you got a good feel of who they, what, what type of principal they would be, and it, I don't think it's like, you're good and you're bad. I think it was just like, you'd be this type of principal, you'd be that type of principal, and that's what you're getting, and that ultimately Dr. Daly will choose, and.
We had time with, uh, so we had time with the committee, an hour or so, and then basically four hours the next day, half hours, forty-five minutes, right? But, um, student panel in here, staff panel, parent panel, and sitting with our administrative team. And so it's just, it's really interesting to see the process play out. With the little school, I will do it slightly different, I'm not, uh, I'm not going to go in front of the students, but I'm asking the teachers to talk to the students, and then bring that information to the, uh, to the session with me. With the actual interviews, I may, you know, there, there's a student council, we might have some interaction. Because I, I learned so much just watching the way the candidate speaks to, with, around the students, as well as the staff and the family. So it's great to see that, so.
Um, Dr. Daly, even though we're, we're, you know, not technically on that subject of the high school, you would send out like an email, like, you have to let me know of your interest by, I think it was January sixth or something like that. And so I, I think there were a lot of people that I, were, were texting me, like, can I have the link for participating? And I wasn't sure if they hadn't gone through you, if they were allowed to do that. So, is that, is that something that's public for sharing, or do they have to sign up first?
Yeah, I would, I will send out something again. I really wanted to know who was there, and do you have the questions kind of pre-approved? I think it's okay if you share, I probably would have shared if someone had written to me that day, not through the form. But everyone who signed up through the form, it was sent to, so, that, that was the process. What I, what I really just didn't want was people just showing up and Zoom bombing or something, you know, I just wanted a little bit more layer of control. So that when I saw the attendance list, it was people who had expressed their interest in being there. So, yeah, I use your judgment on that, I, I wouldn't want to hold somebody out either if they're really interested in. I don't have time now to send them the link, but I will send a reminder about that, so.
I think I missed the part about the pre-approved questions, I just asked what I wanted to ask.
I figured you had some special privileges or something.
Had you approved your questions before?
I wasn't planning on asking anything, but they were so engaging, I was like, alright.
There was nobody there, so I figured I, yeah, I'd do, so.
Maybe some competency, you know.
Determination, yeah. The, then you would have missed out on me, come on. Okay, so just two quick comments on this one, number one, just for anybody listening, at the end of the day, with all this, you know, community engagement and everything, ultimately it is Dr. Daly's decision, so it's nice to be heard, it's nice to give your comments. But ultimately, it is one person's decision at the end of the day, just to be very clear about that, so. Regardless of what we think, it's his, his determination, and then you had mentioned only one member had, well, one, one member so far has already put in to be on that, this is, this is, Mr. Sutherland, Mr. Freeman, you're not allowed because you already did the, the high school one, so. Do either of you want to do that instead, do you want to flip off, do a, do a coin flip with him, or? I will yield to you as well, so, there you go.
Unless you really want to do little school, Scott.
I, well, it was my school, but no, I will let you as a parent of some current elementary, so, right?
For the last little bit.
Last little bit, so, they're a little bit more connected, so.
And I'll just say, thank you for that note, I, I really appreciate all the feedback I am getting, I'm, I'm really listening.
We can still submit it, right?
You can still submit, we're going to have submissions through, you know, certainly after the sixteenth, some people are doing it as they go, some people are doing it once. Every little bit, I, I was, I was looking at some today that just really, it, it's, it helps, it helps to really see things in a different way, so.
I also do not.
Finalist there, I, you know, four is a lot, I don't know if they'll, we'll have four for the little school, but who knows, we're going to let the process play out, so.
Well, excellent, maybe I'll submit a note later, but I gave you my feedback already. School calendar, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
My goal is to have less drafts of this than we did last year, it's a very early start with Labor Day. What we tried to do here was, I, I think the most interesting part, we have a staff day before school. We are shifting to a, an election day, full day professional development. We are trying to reinstate what we called NPEN, which was a professional educators network, which brought low incidence subjects together, so for example, in this district, we have one ceramics teacher. So in professional development days, we're not going to plan something for ceramics, but if you get ten districts together, maybe now you've got six ceramics teachers, and now you can do something, so it's sort of that idea for the singletons, the low incidents. But there's some other opportunities, we've participated and hosted in the past, so that's going on the fourth. It, it is a little tricky with staff, because you've got the fourth and the eleventh back to back, and, and with everyone in the community, but we really think it's valuable. There are some districts that can only take election day as their, as their PD day, because the schools are closed anyway. And so that's why we put it in our calendars, it's not, we don't vote in our schools, our schools aren't closed. But in order to find a day that works, that's the day we came up with, and it took us ten years to get there, we did it, COVID kind of brought it away. I know Mr. Clean and his colleagues are, are looking to bring that back, I don't know if there's anything to add to that, or?
No, we just flipped that with the March to the half, the half day, we had it, we did a half day this year to try to still take advantage of some of those opportunities, and it worked out okay. We missed out on a lot of opportunities because our teachers were teaching in the morning, and some of the offerings were in the morning. So if we can line up a little bit better, we have a few more districts involved, I think we'll really create some nice opportunities for faculty and staff.
The, the biggest thing to note is that, you know, on, on this calendar, we would be going to school on December twenty-second. We would do a, a release day on the twenty-third, which would allow for some travel, anyone traveling for the Christmas holiday. Going into the next week, instead of returning for just one day on the second, we would have that whole week. So there would be a split week on the, on the first week and a full week the second week. That allows us to get out with no snow days, would be the seventeenth. And then our last day with five snow days would be on the twenty-fifth, which is similar to, I believe, what we have this year. So trying to work within that calendar to get to a similar place.
My, my only question was on exactly what you just said, so, I'm guessing because of the half day, if we didn't do early release on the twenty-third, it doesn't change the last day at all?
Correct.
Because it would just add a couple more hours, it wouldn't change the number of days, and so. It's a number of hours that like, okay, that was just my question, because I'm like, if, if it was getting out a day earlier, I would rather say go on the twenty-third. Because, you know, the twenty-fourth is, some people do stuff, I don't, yeah.
And the opposite is also true, if we took the whole of the twenty-third off, we would have to go a day later in June.
Correct.
So by doing the half day, we're able to, to, to get to that place. There was guidance, I will share from the Department of Education with three bullets and suggestions. One of them is doing the one spring break as opposed to the two. I'm very much, yeah, I'm very much opposed to that, I don't think our unions would support that necessarily either. And I always say, anyone that likes that idea, come to the schools in February when everybody's sick and you need to like clean these buildings out. And it, it, it makes a huge difference to break it up. So I don't have anything like that in there at this time, and we don't take a tremendous amount of days for anything other than professional development, and so I think that has allowed us to still start after Labor Day. The other things they recommended were starting before Labor Day, which is a contractual difference in this. Per, per the contract, I do share this with our NREA president and the council, they're in support of the calendar. And I did share it with the Paris as well, and they're in support as well.
Mine was only the, again, I, I think privately said, I think it's odd that there's two different weeks off in February and April, but I have not actually proposed that we go to one in March, but.
It's a much larger discussion if they ever wanted to change that.
Correct, I'm, I'm not suggesting that, but the only question I would say is like, if, if they have day in December twenty-third, if it's better off somewhere else. But like, like March is only one half day off the entire month, but.
His school committee career.
Let's say we're going on Christmas Eve, let's say, they went to school on the twenty-third this year.
And that was the story, Scott.
Oh, no, was that a, no, they, they went, they went back on the second, that's what it was, and so like.
It was last year that we didn't have a half day, and I heard from, from the staffs.
I don't really, I mean.
I think staff are appreciative of that travel time.
If it doesn't, if it doesn't keep, if it, if it wouldn't let people out earlier than, which I thought it wouldn't, then I'm fine with the calendar as drafted. And I did look through as much I could comparing it this year to see if there was anything that looked off, and nothing looked off, so. But basically the seventeenth will be the last day with no snow days.
So Labor Day is the first, is that what it is? Yes, very early this year.
If we have.
Calendar finally flipped.
If we have one snow day, we're good, if we have two snow days, we go to that next week.
That, and that, that was one question that I had, is, is there any risk, so two snow days is fairly likely, assuming we ever get snow again. Is there a risk on attendance on that last day that we run into problems, or is that?
We've had that before, this, this wouldn't be the first year doing that.
Why, because of the nineteenth off?
Yeah. The nineteenth off.
Just having the single day, like, do you risk parents staying around? Does that even matter?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Because right now, if you had one snow day, it's the eighteenth, if you had two, you'd go three days more, so then you're back on the twenty-second.
Yeah, it was like two years ago, three years ago we had that.
Yeah, that does affect attendance.
That's why I like, anything, we could steal one day to, like, allow an extra snow day, but.
I still think having the second off makes sense as well, because I think.
Oh, I, I'm not arguing that shouldn't, I, I think the second.
Either way, it's going to affect attendance.
To come back on the second for one day.
I saw the second off, and it made me smile.
Yeah, I know, it's great, it's great.
No snow, that's all we need, no snow. Yeah, no snow. That's all we need. No snow.
Right.
Or snow on Saturdays, right? That's okay.
Ready for.
Light fluffy, easy to, easy to shovel snow on a Saturday.
Okay.
Mesquith season.
Um, do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year calendar?
Move to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six school year calendar.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous? Um, annual reports, SEEM and North Shore. On a, I'm sure everybody read every word of it, so that was there this weekend, so I, all Sunday afternoon was reading them.
Just wanted to share, uh, this is part of, one of our responsibilities was to update with the annual report. Um, you know, in general with both collaboratives, we find this invaluable. I think we've shared, Cynthia Conant shared quite a bit about how much we s- we save by being members of these collaboratives. Um, we don't have a tremendous amount of students participating. Um, but when we do have students in need, we have, um, great value and it's, it's just, it's an amazing value for overall for the, for the North Shore. To have these two groups. In addition to everything we do with the collaboratives, um, for students, there's also a tremendous amount of work for, um. Staff, professional development, support, shared, uh, programs with SEEM as we've shared in the past.
Right. Like in, uh, like Ms. Barrows is a big, is a big example of that as well, right?
Mm-hmm.
We get, we get access to Ms. Barrows through one of the collaboratives, so. I, I actually did look through. I didn't have any questions. Anybody have any questions on the collaboratives? I'll just, uh, I'll just call out and, and for Dr. Daley that you are also the. What is it? The, the chairman or the chairperson of the, uh?
Not this, not this year. I, not this year for SEEM. I was the chair for SEEM last year. This year I am the, a board member for both.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that.
I did participate in the, uh, Autism Five K, uh, for NEC, so I, I did that this year as well.
What was your time?
My, I'll tell you my son's time. He was in twenty minutes. I walked in, in under forty, so that was good.
Okay. Is Mr. Connolly here for the question?
Hi, how are you?
Hi, Mr. Connolly.
Remote this evening, but I am here.
It's okay.
Um.
Want to go through the school bus contract?
So you have the information about the bus transportation contract? Um, are you guys hearing an echo or?
No.
Oh, we can hear you.
Sounds good, Michael.
Okay. Um, so similar to last year, we have an option to, uh, renew the final year of the contract next year. Or proceed with the, um, you know, potentially going out to bid this year, um, so we can go out to five years. So. So next year would be the fifth and final year, um, meaning fiscal year twenty twenty-six of the North Suburban Transportation Contract. So we, we kind of, about this time last year, looked and analyzed a similar decision. Um, you know, certainly North Suburban, I think has done a pretty solid job of, of service and they've certainly met our expectations. They've, they've been a pretty good collaborative partner over the last four years, um, working with us to bring, um. In a third-party bus right to bring the Parent App, um, get that up and running and work on the GPS system. And we've been piloting, you know, a, a live camera feed on some of the buses this year to see if that's an avenue we, we can go with for increased safety. So they've, they've been a good partner. They've done a, they've done a thorough job, um, in terms of meeting our expectations since they kind of re-won the bid, uh, four years ago. So, uh, we had the decision to make whether we extend the agreement to exercise the second of up to two-year option. Um, of one-year renewals for their final year of the contract. So next year we would absolutely have to go out to bid. Um, I do feel like it is in, similar to how I felt last year. I feel like I was kind of writing a very similar memorandum when I analyzed this over the last few weeks. That it is in the district's best interest to exercise that fifth year. Um, even though we're seeing increases over these last two optional years, like we knew were coming. Um, I do feel like we're still below the market and I do think it's, it's in our best interest to, to renew and then see where things are at next year. Um, analyze some, some, some bid language and see what we can do on the extracurricular athletic round, see if there's, you know, options for. Um, for savings and so forth and then kind of rework some of the, some of the other information that. Uh, language that we've achieved through North Suburban with GPS systems, Parent App systems, live feed systems, kind of right into the bid that we've been pilot, piloting with them. Um, but if you look at some of the, the area communities in the chart, in the memorandum. That, um, is in the packet this evening, you know, those districts that are, have gone out to bid recently or in the process of going out to bid, that have received. Um, you know, fiscal year twenty twenty-six pricing, they're certainly above, um. You know, the pricing that we would receive and, and, and then again, that's North Suburban's contract that they would bid. So in speaking with some vendors and speaking with some area districts that are going out or have gone out recently. Their current year rate, as well as their rates that they've been receiving for next year, uh, are all above, um, what we're currently receiving. So as typically is the case, when you have the ability to go five years, um, even though you might see more of an increase in the later years. Um, based on everything that's been going on with the transportation market, with the shortages of drivers, with, um, changes in sick leave laws and with. Um, prevailing wages going up, as well as the, the gas being, and the, the, the cost of equipment alone, uh, to lease our own equipment. Um, you know, with, the, the, those districts that have gone out to bid within this five-year window that we've, we haven't had to. The pricing's been higher than our, our pricing that is in our five-year bid. So I think that would, I think, I'm very confident that would be what we would see next year. Um, so I feel like we, we exercised the fifth option, um, that's the recommendation this evening. And then we, we look to see, um, how we want to either restructure our bid next year or look at certain language. Do we want to look at? Um, what's the electric bus market be doing? All, all the things we can kind of look at in further review. Uh, but I do think it's in our best interest to exercise that fifth year, which we, we would be at four hundred and forty dollars per bus per day. And those that have gone out to bid, um, we know we're going to get North Suburban. We might get North Reading. There's not a lot of bidders that kind of bid. Um, I think we're going to see that price be potentially over, over five hundred dollars, uh, or close to five hundred dollars. So I, I do think we're going to see, see much cheaper pricing by exercising that fifth year option.
Thank you.
Very confident in that.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Connolly. Um, the only, I mean, only questions I have are about next year and we, I'll save them for now and. If we need more than twelve buses, because, you know, they have been pretty crowded still, but that's again, that's. If, if we needed a, an additional bus, Mr. Connolly, could we add that in later on after approving the contract?
We could. The one thing, North Suburban's been really flexible with us. Um, so I think if we gain them proper notice, they were able to adjust mid-contract. Um, or one, even during this current contract period to get this, I think the eleventh and twelve buses, they found the drivers for us. That wasn't an issue for them. Um, so I do, I do think they would work with us on that if we had to go to a thirteen bus.
Okay. And a long time ago in finance planning team, we had talked about the look, about the buses where they were being parked. Um, we, we don't, that would just be an adjustment we would have to make to the contract. We don't have to, if something were to happen. We, we wouldn't be locked in at all by signing the contract right now, correct? We would still be able to.
Correct. No, um, the existing language would just renew. So if there is in-town parking, we obviously receive a discount for that. So that would be ideal. I think it's in, we can work something out. It's in our best interest from just a service perspective, as well as in the. You know, ten thousand dollar annual discount to the contract. If for whatever reason that would have changed and they have to go back to a different lot out of town. Uh, we just, we lose that discount.
Okay. I have no other que, any questions on the bus contract? Thank you for doing the work up.
Does it lock, uh, I mean, does it lock us into at least twelve buses? How does the contract read?
Um, it's a good question. No, we have some flexibility on that. I think we, we had, I think we're certainly have to commit to around the, the ten, ten bus range because that's how we bid it. Um, but I think we have that flexibility within the ten to, you know, twelve, thirteen buses.
And when would we have to exercise the option by?
Uh, we have some time. I think the contract allows us to go notify them by March first. So I'm just trying to get ahead of it by speaking about it this evening. Um, you know, if we were, if we were not to exercise it, I'd want to start getting the bid out in the next few weeks. That's why we're talking about it today.
I guess where I'm coming from is in, with a very uncertain budget, I think we're at the point now where anything and maybe everything should be on the table when it comes to next year. And if we don't need to exercise it now, is there any advantage exercising it now with, until we get more information from financial planning team on? The deficit we have for next year.
My, my, my retort would be, I don't think it's going to be less if we wait.
Right.
And Mr. Connolly's going to be pretty busy with the budget in the next coming months and so.
No, about physically exercising the option. So like, like, let's say we're one and a half million dollars apart, right? Many towns have resorted to, we're only going to provide busing for the required students.
Yeah, but the, the challenge there is if, if the deadline's March first, that's not going to be enough time to use that as an option anyways. We, we won't have any, we won't have any very specific numbers by then anyways. Like we'll, we'll just be getting operational, we'll just be getting the budgets there. So I don't think, I don't think there's an advantage to us if we cancel the busing altogether and what you could do. Yeah, what you, what you.
Well, I mean, maybe a more blunt question is, is that something that's potentially on the table if there's a deficit across the board that we should be considering?
Well, what we could do is we could also just, we could, we're going to need buses for the ones that we have to bus.
Right.
And we could theoretically just say, I, I would say before you cut the buses, you say you have to pay the entire cost of the bus.
Yeah, I guess that's why I'm asking, is there a minimum number of buses, right? Because if you raise the cost, some parents would certainly opt out.
Right.
And I just want to make sure, maybe, as I look to.
Yeah, no, I.
Mike, like do, are we, are we potentially hamstrung in future budget decisions now? I guess be my only question.
No, I, yeah, it's a good question. Like, it's appreciated. I don't, I, I'm really confident, um, in our relationship with North Suburban that they. Are going to work with us with, with what's in our best interest. Um, whether that, the number of buses has to, has to certainly like fluctuate or change. So I, I don't, I don't see it being, uh, that being a concern by, by doing this now. I think it's just they, it certainly would help them in terms of their planning of. Business as they prepare to, to, um, look at, you know, bidding over the next couple of months. The next couple of months will be, is when generally school bus transportation contracts are bid. Um, so I think it just helps, it helps them and I, um, you know, in their planning, but. I don't think, certainly if there's a major budget issue, that they're not going to work with us on that in, in the future if something happens.
Yeah, you just say, I think the timeline of it doesn't really give us much of an advantage if we have to do it by early March anyways. Because I don't think we'll be making those decisions that, that early either way and.
Right. I think we'll just be starting presenting.
Yeah.
Um, because of the late town meeting and the late vote, you know, I think. That's, that's some of the disadvantages of that. I think, you know, we would have to notify them one way or the other.
I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned of number one, Mr. Connolly's time when we're doing the budget. Number two. I mean, if, if we thought that we'd get a better rate, you know, but to do a bunch of work to, you know, get back to the same spot, I don't think helps us. And then overall, I'm just thinking the better partner we can be and give them time. Maybe it'll be nicer to us next year when we have to get a new contract from them. And so, yeah, I think, I think anything we can do.
Yeah.
Help them would be to be seen as a good partner with them. Um, so.
Yeah, I would agree. I think they would, I think they appreciate the, um, notification. Um, you know, even, it is work and it is an expense. To go out to bid, even to kind of test the market and then, and then reject bids and go back to your option year. So I think, I think companies. You know, don't always appreciate that. So I think, I think they've done a, a good job. And I, I do, like I said, looking at the market, looking at who's gone out to bid. Who went out to bid late last year for twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven that are in this geographic area that, uh. You know, in North Suburban or in North Reading would bid on and they're seeing pricing, you know, well above four hundred and forty dollars right now.
And I agree with all those reasons. It's more of, are we doing anything that we're going to regret in March or April? If, if we're going to have challenging discussions on not only this, on many things, given the initial presentation we got last week. So if you guys are confident, then, then I'm going to.
I would say not for this year. I think for the future, when we're talking transportation as a part of a renewal, absolutely. But I think for this year, we, we just move to renew. Extend, fifty-year option.
But it is worth noting that increase is seven point three percent when revenue increases are two point five percent. So this is yet another.
It's another blow.
Fix cost that is higher than the revenue increase, so. Um, okay. So do we have a motion to approve the option year or the bus contract?
Move to approve. I don't have the wording in front of me. Move to approve. Thank you.
There's no, there's no approve.
There's no wording. Okay.
You have to word it yourself.
I have to come up with it myself. Um, the, um, the contract for, is it twenty twenty?
Oh, actually that is there for me.
Thank you. Um, actually, oh yeah, that's the word I was looking for. The fifth and final optional year of the regular school bus transportation contract with North Suburban Transportation.
Second. I got the easy part.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous?
Great. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Connolly, while you're unmuted, why don't we just do the budget update right now too?
Sure, yeah, that'd be great. So the December budget update is included in your packet, um, summarizes financial activity through the end of December, which is the second quarter of the fiscal year. Um, there's not a lot of new drivers and new information from the, the November report. A lot of the trends. With some of our expenses and some of the information reported last month is still, still similar. We, we certainly have talked about the increase in. Unanticipated costs in our district, costs for special education, both tuitions and transportation. So that, um, certainly the additional appropriation we received in October has helped kind of level that off. We are still monitoring during those trends because there's still a potential this fiscal year that we might see some, some increased costs in those areas with. Either students' needs changing, needing more one-to-one support in our district placement or, you know, needing some, some more transportation. So we, we're, we'll be monitoring those. That's kind of the biggest driver, biggest unanticipated cost we've seen this year. I will say, we are working at, um, trying to bring down, trying to experience some savings in our district transportation by taking, taking that on in-house. Taking more our district transportation on in-house. Um, that was an initiative that we talked about a couple of years ago. We have an additional van that we received this year that we are finally, I think, getting close to probably hiring. A part-time driver that could help reduce our district transportation costs for us. So that's something that we're working on. I'm hoping in the next month or so, it could be something that would become a reality. And, uh, we've done some analysis and that we could, we could save some money, um, by doing that. So that, that was an initiative that we talked about. That was part of what we, how we wrote that airmark grant for that we received and we got, we received that additional van. Um, so that's something we're working on. I think we're, we're pretty close to that. And it's been a process just because of the shortage of drivers and the challenge it is to get qualified seventy licensed drivers in. But if, if that were to, if we have success and we're in the process, I think we're close to that, I think we can save some money in our district transportation. Um, so that's something that we're investigating. We're also looking at our existing staff and reallocating routes and, and. With, between our staff and between, uh, North Reading Transportation, um, to try to see what, where we can, um. Save and collaborate with other districts and get more North Reading students on vans with other districts. And then some of our staff might be doing, instead of doing internal transportation, they're doing out-of-district transportation to save. There's a lot of internal work going on to try to bring these numbers down and avoid costs as well as save this year because it's been. It's been something that has been a big driver of, um, of new costs this, this year, especially as we also look to next year. There, there is a lot of analysis going on kind of behind the scenes that we're working on, um, to control some of these costs. Um, so we continue to just also see a need to provide academic supports for students. Um, support services, talk about story services for special ed students. So we're just continuing to monitor that. Um, everything's kind of, that's been encumbered and anticipated is reflected on the report. Uh, we have seen some unanticipated maintenance expenses with need to, um, address some needs at the elementary schools. Um, but I think we've been able to date to kind of manage those within budget, but we're, again, it's something that we're monitoring. There's not a lot of extraordinary. Expense funds available. Um, so we, we're just something where we're monitoring, but we have seen that. Um, over the last, certainly over the last couple of months. Um, we look at the, the instructional, there are some, you'll see some balances in instructional expense accounts, technology accounts, some professional development areas. We do anticipate that these needs will rise and. We do anticipate that these needs will rise and these will be encumbered as we continue to progress through the fiscal year, but we are taking a as a conservative approach for some of these areas as we can, but certainly budget leaders are planning on, um, certainly spending what the needs are and what the budget, the budget has been. On the payroll side, I think we've certainly, the majority of payrolls certainly tends to be, um, trending within budget. We've been able to, to address the leave of absences, um, the substitute budget seems to be certainly trending in the right direction. We, in terms of staying within budget, but we'll continue to monitor changes throughout the fiscal year. Food service program over the first half of the school year has done, done well. We talked, talked about it each month. The breakfast program's been a success in terms of participation at the elementary level, um, which has brought in some additional revenue. We're also, um, just looking at other areas to kind of bring in revenue. We're looking at some, some, some newest, kind of the state-of-the-art vending machines that we could be looking at, um, to bring in some additional revenue that could be vending machines that are now tied right into the smart snack program that are reimbursable and students could use their, uh, NutriKid, you know, PIN number that they have to purchase. So we are exploring all these things, you know, with the food service director and with Char Wells, um, to, to help bring in some additional revenue. The state is coming out in February, I believe it's the second week in February to audit the food service program. We are, um, due for an audit this year. We're expecting that, so we're in the process of completing a lot of information to submit that to them, which is due by February first. But we're hopeful that that will go smoothly. But we'll certainly, I'm sure they always find something, so we'll report back out when that audit is complete. So I do think, even though we've had some areas of unanticipated costs, I do think at the mo, you know, we are in solid financial standing and we need to just continue to be fiscally conservative, be vigilant in our expenses as we, uh, progress through the fiscal year.
Thank you, Mr. Connelly. Um, I have two somewhat quick questions. First one is, when you're talking about substitute budgets, I know we try to do building-based subs. Do you have any idea like what percentage of the sub-days are covered by the in, by the, by the ones that we have in-house and have we had any issues with getting subs?
Yes, so the majority of the expenses are, on a substitute budget, are from either our, you know, building subs that report, you know, daily, um, the daily, daily building subs that report each day, that is about two per building. We're pretty, we're close to being fully staffed on that. I think this high school might still only have one, but I think the August schools we've been able to, even though we've had some building subs leave, we've been able to hire, hire for that. Uh, so that's the majority of the expense and, and also some internal coverage, which does occur by, uh, paraprofessionals in some cases when a teacher is out. So that is the, the majority of the substitute expenditures. Then we als- also have the on-call subs. We, I think Morgan Soret, as Human Resources Administrator, was really kind of taken over that process, um, which I've been extremely thankful for in terms of hiring and recruiting and getting, increasing that sub-list and working on, you know, building preferences and so forth, has done a, a really good job. We've, we've seen our list grow and we've, we've seen our fill rates increase. We haven't had a major, hasn't been a major concern at any of the building level buildings this year like it, like it may have been, you know, a couple of years ago.
And then, the only other question, you were talking about out-of-district busing. This could be a really dumb question, but if, could, could parents ever decide to just transport their child and in some way receive some sort of stipend or something for doing it? So that there's not a requirement for.
Yes, that does happen. So we do work with parents through the student services office. Um, and we do have parents that prefer to drive their child, um, because they, sometimes parents preferences, if it's a forty-five minute route, they would prefer to drive, um, if that's gonna be the case. I think we have to certainly ensure that the routes are within an hour. So that does happen. So there's, so most, some parents are receiving reimbursement.
Okay.
If they opt to drive, so that, that is occurring. Um, and then we just, we work with Cynthia Kone, the director, and to make sure that everyone's on the same page if, if that's going to be sort of allowed and, and that is the case, you know?
Thank you. We're not completely done. Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Connelly. Uh, someone want to lead us in the minutes?
Can do that.
Thank you, Michael.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Um, move to approve the, um, minutes from the November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, um, open session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
Um, move to approve the, um, minutes from the December ninth, twenty twenty-four open session.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Any extensions? No? Unanimous. Thank you. Staffing, Dr. Daley?
Just a quick update here. As, uh, as Mr. Connelly alluded to, we have a new building substitute, the Bachelorette School, uh, long-term substitutes at the, um, at the Hood School. Kristen Russell is coming over from the Bachelorette to the Hood. Um, we've also brought in Renee Sari and Gina Carapulucci is the building substitute at the Batch. Building substitute at the Little, Katie O'Brien, long-term substitute at the middle school, Emile Lasecki, who moved up from, um, she was a student teacher, um, who's moved up into that role. Nicole Catino, building substitute at the high school, and Nicole Covielo, school nurse, uh, was hired as the floater school nurse, um, for the district. So Ms. Steel moved into the full-time position at the Bachelorette. Ms. Covielo moved into that point-five position for the district. We did have a few resignations, um, Ms. Christina Petrie at the Bachelorette School, school adjustment counselor. And official retirement notification for Ms. Molly, principal at the Little School, Ms. Welsh, paraprofessional at the Little School. Ms. LaPret officially at the high school, and Ms. Patricia Padalano, food service, uh, at the, uh, district as well. She was at the Little School.
Are we doing okay with, with coverage in the food service department?
Are we okay with coverage?
Yeah, for a food service department?
I believe so. I believe they've been able to make others, yeah.
For the, for the other two, for the school adjustment counselor and the paraprofessional, are they being replaced or in the process or?
The school adjustment counselor, the paraprofessional at the Little School is a retirement that will be replaced, uh, that, that will, for July one. I'm, I'm sorry. Both, both of those resignations were effective, um, and they are both posted to be filled, those two positions.
Okay.
Believe they're both posted. If not, they will be posted very soon.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, bids and donations?
Sure. Um, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of four hundred and twenty dollars from the Bachelors, Bachelorette Parent Association, uh, Organization to be used toward the Winter Games.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of five hundred and sixty dollars from the Hood Parent Association to help, to help fund the fifth grade turkey painting student activity.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the, uh, the amount of one thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars from the Bachelorette Parent Organization to be used toward the kindergarten field trip to the North Shore Music Theater.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous?
One more. Uh, I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation in the amount of one thousand fifty dollars from the Boys Soccer, Soccer Boosters, care of David Miller, uh, to be put toward purchasing, uh, CAL Champ Jacks, Jackets.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous? Uh, no grants? Um, school committee social media discussion? Who's leading us in that? Mr. Sutherland?
No, go.
Are we doing that or is this where we're gonna just talk about what you want to post the next time or you're just?
Well, I think we should first talk about the accounts because we don't have those.
Yeah.
We can't post anything yet.
Okay.
So just because I wanted to run this by the overall committee, right? So I've looked into both meta and X, um, in the spirit of having official government accounts with the proper check mark, so everyone knows that we are who we say we are. So recommendation after looking into both is that we consider a separate account, a school committee social account controlled by the school IT department so that as membership changes, the handle stays the same. So when you see something on Twitter, that handle stays with you forever, you know, right? So, uh, if I were to associate it, say with my account or you as a chair, you were to do it, right, someday when, forty-five years from now and you, and you leave, right, we wouldn't be able to gracefully transfer it over. So my recommendation would be that we have, um, probably Mr. Downs, create the, um, some sort of North Reading School Committee Social Account and then have one of us go and create the meta and Twitter accounts based off of that. And then from there, both of them have a verification process where they would go in and they would check election records to basically give you that. In Twitter, it's a gray check mark and in Facebook, it's a blue check mark. You'll get those and then that would denote it as an official government organization as opposed to a personal account.
Is there a cost for this?
No cost. Both are, both services are free. It would, both of them would allow for, if future school committees ever did want to run advertising, they could. So it does leave that open as an option. I don't think that's certainly anything that's being considered now, but it does allow for that once you're recognized as a government organization. So you could run local ads or you could run, you wanted to promote something, you could. And then the only, only thing really to bring up, I think, for this meeting, so assuming we're good to go there, it would be talking about the process or if we want to put a procedure together, where we didn't want a policy, but do we want a procedure for how we formulate? I think what we saw today on these presentations, it would be good to tell presenters coming to school committee if they could have the one chart that ruled them all, that get, if you could tell your story in one chart summary, to have that even as your last slide, because that would be easy fodder for the school committee to then post to social media without changing anything. I've also looked into the Canva platform, which would essentially allow even me to take data from a presentation and then put it in a graphically appealing format that's, you know, North Reading colors and whatever, rather than just text on a page, right?
That way we can keep using the same template.
Exactly. So if that's a route we wanted to go down and move, not having that, you'd have multiple options. That's kind, I would probably recommend that we did that and maybe even discuss a template that we liked as a committee, so that that way we knew what it looked like. You could have the, whatever, the hornet in the lower right or somebody that's artsier than me tell me what looks good. Um, but then that way you could populate even data from one of these presentations verbatim in, but it would have that eye popping, oh, I see it on the screen as opposed to just text that you scroll by.
Does that have a cost?
Nope. Uh, so it can have a cost, but there's a free version that you can, we could, we could make work for, for the courses that we'd look to.
Dr. Daley?
I, I would just recommend, maybe we help create the accounts and the Canva account, because we have access to those things.
Even better.
Even better. And, and, uh.
I didn't know where you wanted that line to be when it says the school committee, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think you're gonna be able to get more done with the school account in the background and I'm actually wondering, did we ever, we, we may have actually done something years ago. I can't remember now whether we did and just haven't used.
I think Mr. Venezi might have created one, so.
What's that?
I'm just kidding. Mr. Venezi may have created.
Okay, yeah, but there may be one. If not, we'll try to get like, and if, if either of you want to just send me what you would, like, if you give me like your top ten, like, in our schools, in our this.
They're both, they're all available. I looked on Twitter. I, I put them all.
Just let me know what they are and then we'll grab them. So, so.
Does it have a name that they?
If you want to copy me and Dr. Downs and then we could just work together and kind of come up with those pieces.
Even better.
And use your school accounts to get right into the, to that piece.
Well, I, I think that's, when you mentioned letting the, you know, presenters know if they have one and all be all slide or infographic or anything like that, I think it's also important and maybe we need to start putting in the agenda or letting presenters know that I, I know that this is a public meeting and it's on NOR Cam, but I feel like sometimes when you're in the confines of this room, you kind of think it's gonna stay there. Because for example, and now I can't remember what it was because I didn't write it down because we're not posting yet, Mr. LaPret had a great quote tonight that I would have loved to have used with one of the slides for social media, but letting presenters know that, hey, we, we are having this account and what you say, we do want to be able to distribute to the community more widely, just so no one is surprised by their words, um, you know, coming back.
You gotta have a template for an infographic. We could just say if you could fill something like this out, you want it to be promoted.
You're saying there should be a quote of the night section?
Maybe. No, he had a great one tonight.
Very good.
All right, yes, I'll send you a note with, um.
Yeah, we'll just get, we'll get a little virtual conversation going.
I noticed the town has several of them, but none of them are verified and that can get you into big trouble later on. In other words, I figure, I think, I think it's better off if we go through the, I think it takes seventy-two hours to verify them. I think it's well worth our investment and it's free.
Very good.
Yeah. And again, like tonight, personally, I think an infographic on the usage of the tier-one and tier-two screening and.
Yeah.
What came out of that would probably be that night takeaway from tonight.
Yeah, his quote was about, about that, yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys. Subcommittee update, finance planning team, Matt. It was just leading up to the, the all-board meeting that we had the other day and really just looking at what the revenue is. I sent that out to everybody, so you have a copy to get your read. Um, but, yeah, any questions on that? Policies Subcommittee?
Uh, well, we talked about the graduation requirements, which we all learned more about tonight, and we talked about recess.
Competency determination?
And competency determination, yeah, graduate requirements and competency determination. Um, do you want to add, does anyone want to add more on that? Or I think we learned a lot about it tonight. Uh, we talked more about recess and what came out of the Impact, the K through twelve Impact Team. And, um, at that meeting, Dr. Daley presented some draft language to the whole, to the whole group and there was, um, some good feedback from them. I know Dr. Daley has talked, started talking at the middle school and, and we're getting there with both elementary and middle school and some, we're calling it active academics maybe at the, at the high school level. And also nutrition and wellness?
Yep.
I forget.
And then the other really, no, the other really fun one, the Title IX changes that.
Oh, that's right.
That are gonna be.
Yeah.
We, we spent all this time and effort changing and then changing again, and now we're changing back based on a legal decision, um, very recently, so. We are, just to be clear, we are officially, as of that decision, reverting to the old Title IX policies. Even though we haven't had two readings or reverting back, um, we're always gonna follow the law. And then, you know, I, I'd much rather follow the law and be brought to task and then we didn't do two readings of a school committee policy, right? So we're, we're gonna do that and then we're gonna catch up. Um, we didn't want to rush to get it in. Um, honestly, it came out even too late to get it on this agenda, but there's more guidance coming, so we're, we're gonna adapt that. But essentially, we're gonna revert back to the policies, uh, and the procedures prior to last year's changes, so.
And if anybody, I don't know, do you guys, are you, do you guys all get the listserv emails? You do, do you get them? You might want to sign up. Do you get them?
I get them.
If you want, I just, because MASC puts out listserv things all the time and just, it's useful to know what's going on and like that was one of the ones that came out, like decision of the court.
The other was the field trips, right?
Well, yeah, field trips, there was, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion on whether field trips should have a, should have a cost associated with them or not. And I asked you about that the other day and that's more for like the mandatory ones as opposed to.
Subsidized law.
Yeah.
I will say the, um, the Title IX, just to be clear, it's a little different than the way it's playing out nationally because Massachusetts has state law that, 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 um, speaks to gender identity for two thousand thirteen. The federal Title IX added it, so that is now removed in states that didn't already have it. But we already have it, so it doesn't change some of those pieces. Um, so some things you might read nationally, it's gonna be a little bit different, but it would play out with the, the, the previous laws and then also everything that's in place in Massachusetts.
Okay. Science Arts Subcommittee, I missed that, so you were.
Yeah, and I was driving, but, um, and it was like forever ago. Um, it feels like it was a long time ago. But just, um, we talked about the ACV, the Arts Cultural Vitality Grant and, um, I, and just, I, I still don't actually fully understand what the point of that is except for like compliance. Maybe you could explain that a little bit more.
Great article in the transcript this week about it.
Okay, well, there you go.
No, it's a tool, it's a tool for us to examine the new frameworks, how they're being implemented and really to look at equity, like are, are stu, are all students having access to all these different opportunities in the district? And so it's, it, it really helps support the work we're doing through our, our, um, our strategic plan. what they're doing through accreditation. So really looking at, like, when they talked about tonight, about eliminating barriers, prerequisites, um, allowing some differences, I think the question came up, do teachers support this? It was actually, teachers are driving it, and they're using data from ACV to get there, because they're, they're setting up panels of students, other teachers, parents, what they're getting from their arts experience. And it's everything from performing arts to fine arts. Um, we did receive the grant this year, and so we're able to do that. So what they've introduced this year, we are, we may be the only tier-three district, so we're sort of the, helping others, uh, through it. But, so we're sort of in between what they're calling phase two and phase three. We're not quite implementing it, we're still doing some self-reflection and then implementing. But they have a nice matrix for measuring outcomes, and there's four, I, I don't, can't recall them all right now, but there's sort of four lenses that you can look at your success through, um, that we, that we're excited to, to look at that through this week. So I wrote an article for the, uh, transcript this week that gets into a little more detail about.
It's your article.
What's that?
It's your article.
This was my article based upon my work with the group, um, that, that we had. So we're, we're very excited to be a part of that, um, work. We're also looking at, um, I don't know if you were gonna say other things about, I was just add other things we talked about.
Um, oh, no, I was just gonna say, kind of on that same note, there was a discussion about the, um, the amount of freshman enrollment in art classes versus like business. Um, and it was just really interesting, kind of, you know, speaking of self-reflection, like, why are there so many kids who aren't enrolling in the business-type courses and not in the art? It's like a, a low number of kids, freshmen, enrolling in the art courses versus business, and why that might be. Um, so, um, let's see, what else?
I can add a few.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that a trend, is that a trend, just a one-year trend, or is that a, a trend over many years?
It's stated trends over many years. We, we, um, we are gonna continue to look at some of those numbers.
Yep.
Um, and, and talk about what the drivers are of different enrollments. And, and I think the, the discussion was around, is there, are we messaging that somewhere? Is someone saying, these are the courses you should take? And where is that coming from? I think that's some of the questions that are being asked. Um, again, intersecting with some of the equity work and some of the NEASC work about, you know, how we, how we educate the whole child. Um, but we certainly talked a lot about the process. We've also had a joint labor management group meeting with the NREA, uh, tangentially to this, to talk about some new positions. Um, we have a process, we have a, we're, we're pretty close, Mr. Friedman is on that group. Um, but we did, uh, approve a few positions, um, that have been in place since the start of the year. Um, a little bit of outside the order of operations, how I'd like to see it happen, but there was some overlap between contract negotiations, joint labor management, people having the idea that this was a go. So, I think, uh, we've corrected that with the, with the groups. At the end of the day, it's a great benefit for students. It's, you know, if you went to the high school winter concert, seeing there's a, there's a, a new a cappella group, um, they were fantastic, you know, just, and you see the students performing. They did an Elton John medley that was incredible. Um, and these are students that would not have been in notorious, that are able to perform. So that's a group that went through. If you saw Mean Girls and just realized the amount of choreography that's gone into these shows in recent years, and how much that has changed, uh, we were able to have a different, uh, stipend for that, and adding a stipend for choreography at the, for middle school, which didn't exist. And when you see some of the dancing, um, as you can see, we're, we're adding it as a PE requirement, because there's so much calisthenics and dancing and, and, and work. So I think those were well worth getting through outside of the process, and compensating people in a reasonable amount of time. The joint labor management group is progressing at a pace it needs to. These people have already been in here, done their work, and so we wanted to meet them. So that, I just wanted to be transparent about that. But moving forward, there'll be a clear process for adding of new positions that will go through, um, a process through these subcommittees.
I, I'll just add to that and say, uh, that while we did make, uh, some changes, everything's still within, when, when you look at comps across the board, it's still well within, uh, well within range of what other districts are doing. So we're not, we're not out of line with anybody.
And to be clear, a lot of our discussion was around the finances, and where, you know, how can we possibly afford this? None of this is coming, uh, in for this year. Part of the agreement to get it through, it's all coming from revolving, you know? So it's not, this is not coming, this is not additional, this is coming from tickets and, and, and fees and those other plays. It's not, it's not additional positions that are coming in. It's, it's self-sustaining for this year, and then we have to talk about what those look like moving forward.
Yeah, and, and the, I mean, as, as you stated, the other point that's hit home is this has to be a deterministic process moving forward. It's not sustainable to, to every year make changes. And that was well-understood and well-appreciated, that. I'm not gonna say that's just all on us. So I, I thought it was, you know, look, you've done a lot more of those than I have, uh, but, uh, I, I thought it was overall a productive process.
Thank you for doing that. Finance planning team is scheduled to meet February seventh at eight fifteen AM. Policy subcommittee on February seventeenth at two thirty. Athletic subcommittee, January fifteenth at twelve thirty. Fine art subcommittee, January sixteenth.
Let's say February sixth.
What, twenty-sixth?
It's February sixth.
February sixth.
Yeah, there's a small group meeting that actually I'm going to reschedule, because those are principal interviews. But the, the large group with school committee there is, uh, the sixth.
Okay. Like, I don't think I was going to that.
There's also, um, substance abuse.
Oh, yes.
On January twenty-seventh.
Did you have any before or not?
Uh, not since the last meeting.
Okay.
And then, um, fire station master planning is tomorrow.
Okay.
Well, two separate, two separate meetings, but both tomorrow. Uh, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Anything going on in NOR Cam?
Yeah, I know.
Um, no.
I know.
No, but I do want to actually talk to, I, you know, we had some, no, not right now.
Okay. Um, administrative report?
Could, could I just ask the, the fire station date?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Uh, sorry, Wednesday. I, yeah, Wednesday.
What's that, the fifteenth?
Fire station at five, and master planning at six.
It's almost tomorrow.
Yeah.
Fifteenth, Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, just quickly wanted to report on, I, I think I've already updated on the principal search, where we do have four finalists. We did two interviews, uh, last week, and two this coming Thursday. And then the following week, we'll have a, a small team that will visit, uh, site visits at, uh, one day we'll hit, uh, Littleton and Air Shirley, and another day Newton and North Reading. So we're excited about that. Uh, and, and a great job by Cynthia Conant and Morgan Sories, um, Sories for this, uh, for their work. It's really been a great process. Um, field naming committee, just as a reminder, we have, I'll send out a reminder on this, uh, tomorrow, that we have, um, through the end of this week to get in nominations. We currently have, um, a handful of nominations and a handful of, uh, people. It's recommended, I believe nine is the number. Um, and we've got, and, and those are in specific places. We have about eleven people interested in joining the committee. Um, and there's been about fifteen or so overall comments, nominations. Some want to join the committee but didn't have a nomination, some had a nomination but didn't join the committee. So there's certainly a lot for us to look at there. Just as a, a reminder, the next steps in that process is we will have a public hearing. Uh, that public hearing will be here, and then after the public hearing, the school committee will, um, will meet. And we don't necessarily have to make a decision on anything. You know, just because there's a proposal, we could decide not now, not at this time, you know, and, and think about different variables that are out there. So I, I do, you know, I'm aware that some, uh, people in the committee have reached out to other individuals asking them to write letters, which I think is, is fine, anybody can write a letter, but I, I've, I do want to just say publicly, anyone that wants to nominate someone can nominate them. And I don't believe you need to be a resident of North Reading to nominate a person. I didn't see that in our process. So anyone can nominate, and then the people on the committee will consider them, and then it comes before the school committee's decision. And then eventually it does need to go to town meeting for approval, if it is a field name. So, any questions?
Um, does the eleven include the two athletic subcommittee members? I think we had talked before about the athletic.
I don't believe.
Being on there?
Yeah, I don't believe anybody completed the form, and that's fine. You don't, you, yeah, you don't have to complete the form.
I assumed, I assumed that was.
Yeah, no, 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 that's fine.
Well, I'm just wondering, are, are we still planning on putting the athletic subcommittee members as part of that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are, and I don't believe they're included in the.
I was just wondering the numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, yeah, and, and as you said, like, doesn't mean we have to, so like, if there's, if there's five worthy people that all have a nomination, like, we might say, let's push it, and, I don't know. We'll see. Um, no correspondence at this time?
Not at this time.